Good here on time tonight. All right, the time is 6:31. I want to be cognizant of everybody's time and start on time. We have a full council here tonight. Councilman Hicks, would you please do the invocation one more time for us?
Absolutely, Mayor. Dear Father, thank you for today. Thank you for bringing us together to do business for the city of Sibolo. And we do the right thing for our citizens and stand up for the citizens and just watch over our first responders and our military personnel and their families. In these things, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible for the liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have several people signed up to citizens to be heard. Thank you. This is the only time during the council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is an opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue, to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens. According to Attorney General Opinion JC-0169, limit of three minutes each, all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any attendee, including city staff. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is live streamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the city of Sibolo or on an agenda item and to have the item read at the meeting, please email citiesecretary@sibolotx.gov or call 210-566-6111 before 5:00 PM on the date of the meeting. We have...
Travis Stevo, I'm one of the several landowners here concerned about the stormwater runoff damage to our properties, property in 1821, 1837, and 1841, Wheaton Road, and the runoff's coming from the Saddle Creek Ranch subdivision. We are here to voice our opposition to further development of the Saddle Creek Ranch subdivision until the city of Sibolo addresses the runoff issue that's been destroying our property for over 12 years now. Erosion and silt deposits have made a good portion of our land unusable for livestock. The ground is unstable and full of holes. In some places, the fences have been knocked down by the floodwater multiple times, allowing our livestock to escape and wander onto FM 1103. In other places, the silt deposits have buried fences, making them useless for livestock appropriate control without constant repair. And let me go ahead and mention the garbage. We get a huge amount of garbage that runs down from that neighborhood, and not just bottles and cans. There are plenty of bottles and cans. But we're getting things like construction materials, boards with nails in them. They're touching on my property, but my horses walk. Pallets, car tires, Capital R2 televisions, and even disposable diapers. Just a mess. But then, of course, not to mention all the grease and oil from the street that runs down through our property, straight across our property into the natural water. So this is not our first time of addressing this issue in the city. Previous conversations have been handled with a gentleman's agreement and a handshake, but nothing has actually been done to resolve the issue. So we are demanding something more substantial than a promise from the city manager this time. We're prepared to take our formal complaint to the TCQ, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, if we cannot get the city to help us with our issue and help resolve the damage to our property. The handouts you have there, the first six or so slides are a Google representation of the property starting in 2010, before there was any damage to the property. And if going forward, 2012, we'll see the next one, and that's when the neighborhood went in and started seeing the flow come across our property, and then all the way up to 2014, 2018, and 2023. So that's the progression and the destruction of the property. That last slide is just an example of the high fence, where our fence post is this tall because the silt has come in and filled it in. We've got to go back and re-fence all the way down. I would like to get the rest of my time, one of my colleagues here, we have three of us speaking today.
There's 24 seconds left, so, okay. So did they sign up to speak as well?
Yes.
Did they sign up to speak as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next up is Harold Desenberg, or Denzberg, I'm sorry, Denzberger. Harold? Welcome, Harold.
Our property is at 1837, 1841 Wheaton. Prior to the city allowing Saddle Creek Ranch to be developed, we never had issues with flooding on our property.
Since this has been developed, we've had flooding. It's eroded our property. It's destroyed our fences, at least five times, maybe even 10. And we had to pay every time to get it repaired. Many years ago, my father came down to the city and visited with people, the people in charge, and they assured him they would get it fixed. They did nothing. All they did was increase the amount of drainage going through there and direct it right through our property. And you can see the areas provided. So Texas Water Code 11.086 states it prohibits anyone from diverting or impounding the natural flow of surface water if it causes damage to another person's property through overflow. And that's exactly what it's doing. Sibolo Storm Management Plan, SWMP, requires stormwater drainage be maintained on-site and must maintain existing drainage patterns to prevent flooding to adjacent properties. So my question is, why is the city allowing additional homes to go in on this development that is already out of compliance with the city SWMP? Finally, we're asking that the city, excuse me, the city takes action to eliminate the flooding on our property before they approve any additional homes over there. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Tina Denzberg, Denzberger-Burdet. Welcome, Tina.
Good evening. Tina Denzberger-Burdet, 837 and 1841 Wheaton Road. And we've owned the property since 1993 and never had any flooding issues until Saddle Creek Ranch was developed. The flooding has destroyed our fences, as the other two have told you, and our property values. The property's been for sale for years now, and when people come out to look at the property, they see the issue of the drainage, and they don't want to buy the property. The silt buildup has gotten so bad that our horses can get out. So we've had to put a fence up at the top of our property to keep them from going down just so they can't step over the fence. And we have the construction material. We have, like Travis said, wood with nails in it down there. They did come out in 2018 and filled it with filler dirt, but it's also washed away. But we are just asking that the other property, the other addition to Saddle Creek not be approved until they take care of the flooding issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak on this exact topic?
Okay. Mr. Reed, it seems like, at least from the pictures that were presented to us, that the flooding is coming from the other side of 1103 and crossing a text dot road and then causing issues over here behind, you know, the dental place and things like that. So I know with 1103 being a text dot road, it's under reconstruction right now. Once it's done, it'll have storm sewers, drainage, all that. So you would think that naturally the 1103 solution would solve this problem, right?
Mayor and council, I need to actually meet with our residents here, with our city engineer, our planning and economic development director, Brian Huggins, our executive director, and Julio Gomez, our public works director, to actually understand these issues. We will, like we have when we've had other neighborhoods come to us, including residents of the Saddle Creek Ranch neighborhood, but many other neighborhoods with concerns about new development. And we will identify issues, commit to solutions, and we will follow up with the developer as well on this. So I don't know, Mayor, the issue you're raising to me, if that's part of the cause, the root issue or not. But I promise you that our executive team that I just named, we will meet with these residents. We will bring the master developer into the conversations, and we will identify solutions to address their concerns.
Thank you.
The issues that they've raised are unacceptable.
Agreed. Thank you. Next up is Charity Rodriguez. Welcome, Charity.
Hi. So I am a HOA member of the Saddle Creek Ranch Development Community. So we have over 700 homes in that area. And we have a contract that we have not seen completed. There was discussion of $35,000 we have not received. We have heard that they have made a payment, but we, it was all supposed to be in one lump sum. We do, we had multiple managers verify that we have not received it. We've been trying to get this money for years, and each manager we've gone to and said, hey, we need to check and make sure that we haven't received it. I got verification yesterday. They went back all the way till 2020, and we have not received any money. So there were some things that were supposed to be completed as well, including monuments that were supposed to be repaired. The concerns that the other community has, I mean, the other homeowners, are very important to us because we have a Lomard flood area. And that right there is a big concern for us because we've been told that we're responsible for that. And we are HOA people. We have no idea what that means, but that is not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to community that we have. And we are very concerned because even when the developer came in, they said, oh, we're going to have another amenity. And that has never happened. And all the people, when they originally come in and that new area that's been annexed in, they're automatically upset with us because they think that we're the ones that have not put the amenity there. And not only that, but it is not being taken care of at all. In, we've had to fight for just getting mowed, you know, just those things. We have areas where sidewalks are broken. We have just a very hodgepodge situation. And if you're talking about making more, having them build more, that's just going to create more issues for us. Because right now, as an HOA president, it's, it's an untenable situation. Not only we've got too much land that we didn't anticipate, but we also have all of these homeowners that are upset, and we're trying to make sure that all of the things get addressed. We've given a list in April to the community, to the city of Sibolo, and those have not been completed yet either. These were requests by, to the developer in regards to what's been going on. And we really want to see that done, especially things that are super simple, you know, building a sidewalk. I mean, originally, we asked for them to build us an amenity as they promised the community members. We were asking for a full court ball, basketball court, or some other thing. I would be fine with exercise equipment in that area. But now, not only do they not do that, haven't given us the money for it, but now we've got Beezer putting, trying to sell that land. And then it would be a landlocked area that we can't build on.
Who's the home builder?
There's been four.
I'm sorry?
There's been four. So there's been KB, there's been Beezer, there's been...
Currently.
Beezer.
Beezer, okay. Thank you.
But all have said that they're going to build an amenity.
Yep. Understood. Thank you so much. Next up is Courtney Kemp. Welcome, Courtney.
Hi. I'm also on the HOA at Saddle Creek Ranch, and I'd just like to confirm what Charity said. We have not received the money. I spent all morning checking myself through years of accounts. And in that denomination that the developer gave the council, it doesn't exist. I also wanted to ask you guys not to vote for more properties at this time going into Saddle Creek Ranch because the developer has continued to deed us property that we don't want. We don't have the money to maintain. We don't even know how to maintain it properly. We're currently at 20 acres of property. I believe the last time I talked to someone in the city, they said nine acres. And now we're at 20. So it's constantly increasing, and we don't know what to do with this property. We're overwhelmed. Some of the property, most of the property is floodplain. At this time, we have homeowners digging ditches behind our fences to keep the water out of their yards. Those homeowners aren't even the ones that we think their homes might be in floodplain. Those are the safe homes. They have a drainage basin behind some of these homes. It's inadequate, and we were told that we are to maintain this basin. We don't know how to maintain it. We don't have the money to maintain it. And when it, at this time, with the homes that we have, when it rains, the basin fills up, and these homeowners' yards flood. When we add more homes, something's going to have to be done to save their homes from damage, and we don't have the ability to do that. Another concern I have is that we, to vote today to go forward more Saddle Creek Ranch development, we currently have open C Click fixes that are developer responsibilities that have not been taken care of. We have debris that is filling up Cowboy Knoll. Cowboy Knoll also has crushed, we have sidewalks, they're crushed and not usable for someone with disabilities or our residents that have wheelchairs. I think our other C Click fix that's open is, well, it was sent to code compliance, and it's for our own maintenance, where we cannot maintain the property because it looks like it's overgrown, but it's full of stakes left by the developer. I also ask you guys not to close out our older sections because we, that was from our first section that is officially closed out, and the developer just won't take care of the responsibilities. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Courtney. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Joel.
I know that this is a hard pill to swallow. By all means, I'm in your favor. But the developer, usually, once they have finished with the areas, they turn that property over to the HOA, and the HOA is ultimately responsible. I'm not saying that it's right. But then they should be paying y'all something because they get, I'm just saying, should be paying y'all something. Like you said, you're supposed to be getting stuff. But I know that usually the HOA, because I've got friends up in Garden Ridge, had the same problem, to find out that the HOA is responsible for any drainage easements inside their HOA. But I do feel your pain, and thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Katie?
So this has been an ongoing issue. We've had numerous meetings, numerous emails back and forth, numerous conversations. We had a meeting with the HOA board in April, at the end of April, with a couple of council members and the HOA board to discuss it with our engineer and other city staff. Last week or two weeks ago, Norman, I met with the current engineers, developers, and our city engineer and our planning director, not planning, our public works director out at the Saddle Creek Ranch, the new section, to discuss some of the issues with the road with the staff from the builder. It seems like we're having separate conversations about this, and the issues are, there's something missing. We have this conversation with the HOA where they're saying, we haven't been paid. We don't know what to do with this. We're being deeded properties that we don't know that we're even deeded. It's in, it's at the county, but the deeds aren't signed. The property things aren't signed. We're just being handed this and told to maintain it. We haven't received any money. The people that we met with a couple of weeks ago at Saddle Creek Ranch said, well, we found this agreement that said that they have been paid, and we've been told that they've been paid. Something's missing in the middle. And I don't know that it's the city's responsibility to mitigate that or be the mediator for that, but something has to happen because this is going to continue to go and go and go and go. And it's not fair on the HOA because they've raised these concerns for at least four years, if not longer. And it's not fair for the people who are building because they're, they're actively, based on that conversation we have, they are actively working to address the issues that we are raising. But they only know about them once it goes through these 15 channels and gets to them. Whoever that is in the middle, I don't know who it is, but it may be the owner, the original developer of the property. I don't know. But whoever it is that's signing these agreements and saying that they paid the HOA and they didn't pay the HOA, and they're saying that they did this and they did, I don't know who that is. But if we could please set up some kind of meeting with all of the relevant parties and try to figure out some solution moving forward, because this is, we've tried to work it on the HOA side. We've start, tried to work it with this, our city staff. We've tried to work it with the builders. And now I'm getting emails from people who have bought properties, who have bought lots on these new sections that they can't build yet because we haven't done the initial acceptance or the preliminary acceptance of the plots. So now we're affecting new residents of Sibolo. Something's got to give, and we can't keep punishing these builders. And I'm really not usually pro-developers, so that's shocking coming from my mouth. But we can't keep, we can't keep delaying this thing when the issues may not be there. They're in this, like, middle area. So my ask, I guess, is that staff figure out all the parties involved, and we figure out a way to mitigate this so that we can find some kind of solution and move forward. Because it's, it, this is never-ending. It's years and years and years of this.
Ms. Kemp, I appreciate that opening, and so...
I appreciate that opening, and staff is committed to following up. So you're right, we started in late April having meetings with the HOA board members. Recently, you, Ms. Sancha Stevens, met with several staff members and the master developer, developer and representatives. And so our next step was to convene another meeting where we bring the HOA and the developer, the appropriate people from that side. And staff will facilitate that meeting. The council members who have been involved that want to continue to be involved will be invited to such a meeting. Our role, right, is it's a private matter, but we represent the community. And so we want to do the right thing for these residents. So we will facilitate a conversation which we document agreements and what each side owns as far as their responsibility. And then we'll ask to hold them to it. And we will continue to work with the HOA on that. Tonight, we had some residents talk about the impact that they're incurring. We will do the same thing with them. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Reed, because those are our constituents, and we have to answer to them. So we're here, every last one of us up here should be fighting for the citizens. So please make sure that gets done. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Reed, for stepping up to assist with these negotiations between the homeowners and the developers.
Also, I, in the concerns of the HOA too, as a private property and not being able to keep up with the demand for the mowing, I know that at our meeting the last time, they had requested, even if the city could mow at a nominal fee, that they would be willing to do that. I think we should probably reopen that in discussion just as well. And council would have to give direction to the city manager for staff to be able to do that. So I think that needs to happen. I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but I think it needs to be coming for the agenda to make that, give that direction.
Thank you. Anna Nunez.
Hello. My name is Anna Nunez. I'm a public affairs specialist with the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. First, thank you to Mr. Robert Mahoney for your warm welcome. That was very nice. And I also want to thank Ms. Peggy Simick, City Secretary for the city of Sibolo, for assisting me with this opportunity to share information about the President's Major Disaster Declaration for Texas's severe storms, straight-line winds, and flooding that occurred in July 2025. The SBA's disaster loans are available to help businesses, nonprofits, churches, homeowners, and renters recover from declared disasters. These long-term, low-interest rate loans help folks rebuild, get back to business, and make property improvements that can eliminate future damage or save lives. Homeowners and renters can use the loans to replace personal property, and there is no need to wait for settled insurance claims, potential FEMA grants, or contractor estimates before applying. You do not need to own a business to apply for an SBA disaster loan. Guadalupe County, which includes the city of Sibolo, was declared a primary county in the Texas Presidential Disaster Declaration 21174. And that means all of you are eligible for both physical and economic injury disaster loans from the SBA. A business physical damage loan is for up to $2 million to cover physical damage and financial losses, with an interest rate for businesses as low as 4%, up to a 30-year term, and deferred interest and payments for the first 12 months. Nonprofits are 3.625. There are home disaster loans for up to $500,000 to cover damage to primary residences, and up to $100,000 for homeowners and renters to repair or replace disaster damage, personal properties such as clothing, furniture, appliances, and vehicles. Lastly, there are economic injury disaster loans for up to $2 million to help small businesses and nonprofits to meet their working capital needs through the recovery period, meaning folks don't have to have physical damage, but if you couldn't make your rent payroll, whoa. Okay, so I will email additional information to be forwarded for you. The most important thing is the application for physical damage loans is September 4th, 2025, and the deadline for economic injury disaster loans is April 6. Folks can go to sba.gov/disaster or call
Thank you very much for coming to the city of Sibolo. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So we have three emails to be read by the city secretary office. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss somebody? Thank you, Katie. Pamela. Hello.
I was here the last council meeting, and I had some, was very angry at the road construction going on Deer Creek Boulevard. We finally got four days of work out of them since May, straight four days of work. It's still not completed, and what they're doing is they're putting dead grass, dead sod, on what their repairs are. That's unacceptable. And thank you, Mr. Hicks, for what you said. You're here for the citizens of Sibolo. That's not happening. This contractor, DNT, has also been awarded several other street contracts with no accountability. Nobody's making them accountable for anything. And the same as the trash company. One thing I would like to say, Mr. Mayor, my last meeting here was very disrespectful. I was talking to the council members, and there's been several people repeating what I'm going to tell you. It was not fun sitting up here, talking to a mayor and a city council while you're stuffing your face as fast as you could with chips. That was very disrespectful to your council members and to the people who were talking. And I think you guys need to be more accountable for what's happening and what you're doing awarding these contracts. And I would also suggest that you're looking at getting a new city manager. Because a lot of this stuff hasn't happened until he became city manager. And that's all I have to say. And I thank you for listening. And I hope things change.
Thank you, Pamela. Okay, so we have three items to be read by the city secretary office. Val, you going to read them?
The first one is, there was no real name. It's just, youwishyounewme29@gmail.com. Says, "Right now, the city manager has 100% of his family's benefits covered over $1,000 per pay period for both the employee and employee contributions. Meanwhile, the city's first responders and public works employees, who are actually on the front lines when disaster strikes, are paying $400 plus per pay period just to cover their entire family. If this inequity continues, it won't be a surprise when police and fire move towards civil service protections, Union for Public Works, forcing the city's hand in making this change. Currently, the city of Kerrville is under hot water for this very issue, and a KSAT story will be broadcasted for the same..." will be broadcasted for the same thing that's happening there that has been happening in Cibolo. Take care of your people. Leadership benefits and golden parachutes should never outweigh the well-being of those who risk their lives daily. After all, it would look great as a win in the city manager's next cover letter for his next city manager application."
Mr. Reed.
Mayor and council, I just want to make a factual response to the public comment that was made. If Tracy Beekman would bring up the PowerPoint. Look at that remotely. Mayor and council, I have a short presentation. I want to provide a factual response to the public comment which speaks to the city manager and employee compensation. The first three slides, starting with this one, are from the July 8th presentation by Elizabeth Taplin. And so what I want to do is not read verbatim what's on this slide about our compensation philosophy, but I want to summarize it. I want to start by sharing the city's position on compensating our employees based upon their skills, knowledge and experience. As noted under the purpose shown on this slide, we seek to provide fair, competitive and fiscally responsible pay practices that are market-competitive. In addition, we look externally and internally on how to set competitive wages. Our philosophy reflects that our belief is that people are our greatest assets. Our key principles are identified on the bottom. You'll remember this slide, council, from the same July 8th meeting with Elizabeth Taplin presenting. I'm sharing this slide to emphasize where we look externally to benchmark our employee positions and determine market competitiveness. We also perform, as shown on this slide, a classification compensation analysis to ensure that we drive equity and fairness in our adjustments. This slide's a history of how we have put money to our words. I want to emphasize that prior to my arrival in July of '21, the city had not adjusted salaries based on market-competitive for at least seven years, based upon the records that I pulled a decade. In my first 60 days with the council at that time, I brought to you the awareness of just that fact. And the response, Mayor Allen, you were on the council at the time, Mr. Hicks, that y'all didn't know that because previous leadership did not bring forward an argument to pay employees market-competitive wages for their skills, knowledge and experience. It was one of my priorities to raise council's awareness about compensation in my first 60 days and every year thereafter, and I appreciate that council shares that compensation philosophy. That is our official compensation philosophy that was on the previous slide. So in 2021, I want to highlight a firefighter because that was mentioned in the public comment. The starting salary for a Cibolo firefighter was lower than surrounding cities. The firefighter minimum, so that's on the pay range, was just over $40,000 annually, about 25% to 30% behind market. In the FY '22 budget, which council approved in September of '21, just within 90 days of me starting, council directed me in the FY '22 budget to find a way to bring our police and fire personnel to market-competitive wages in a fiscally responsible way. And it also made a commitment to do a market study for all employees because they're all equally important, to fund the study in FY '22 so that we could bring everybody to market in the FY '23 budget. A firefighter's starting salary was increased in the FY '22 budget to $51,500 annually. In FY '23 and FY '24, employees were eligible for merit and COLA adjustments and a firefighter's starting salary increased to $55,000, just over. In FY '25, following voter support of Prop C, a firefighter's starting salary increased to 60, over $60,000. My point here is that in just a little more than three years, the starting pay for a firefighter increased over 150% because the city supports compensating all employees, not just firefighters, market-competitive pay based upon their skills, knowledge and This reflects that we seek to attract and retain top talent through compensation, benefits and culture. When I started, our turnover rate was above 23%. As shown during presentations this year during the summer, we're at 11%. And that amount has ebbed and flowed, but we have never returned back to 23%. And even today, we're already with the budget coming to you next month for approval for FY '26. The staff's already talking about next steps to look at making sure that we continue to evaluate market and are, we're actively working with the fire department on the structure of their pay. And so this is a constant effort to remain competitive, to attract and retain top talent. And in closing, council annually reviews my compensation and you determine, based upon market, what you want to do for my compensation. I'm going to end here. So how do we put money where our words are? This shows you that in the FY '25 market study, the cost to move in this budget year for our police and fire was a $1.2 million hit. Council said we want to make that happen. Our voters supported it. Our public works employees, we moved them to market and that was $400,000. I'll close with this slide and remind council, and really, this is for the general public. People represent 68% of the expenditures in the general fund because we are a service industry. We serve our constituents and we serve our businesses. Our general fund is just here under $25 million, so personnel represents just over $17 million. Thank you very much.
Yes, please.
I would just like to state as a new council member this year, I myself, as a resident, have seen some of the changes that have come about in the City of Cibolo, and I'm thankful that we have been able to increase, thanks to the council and to our leadership, the pay for some of these individuals because they have taken care of my family as well as my extended family. So I would like to continue seeing Cibolo move forward, not backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two more, is that right?
Yes.
Yes. The second one is from Derek Logan. "I want to address the agenda item regarding the city manager's contract, specifically the request for an additional month of severance pay. As you know, new Texas legislation, House Bill 762 and Senate Bill 2237, will take effect on September 1st, 2025. These bills limit city manager severance packages to no more than 20 weeks of compensation for new or renewed contracts. The intent of this legislation is clear. Taxpayer funds should not be used to provide excessive payouts to employees who are no longer serving the public. Under the new law, severance will be capped, prohibited entirely if the termination involves misconduct and must be disclosed publicly on the city's website. These safeguards were enacted to protect taxpayers from exactly this kind of financial overreach. The city manager is taking this to your direction just five days prior to legislation preventing this from being a conversation prior. Quite interesting on the timing, just under the radar, just like a $49,999 signed contract went right under council's nose, you're going right under the taxpayer's nose. In real terms, that cap already equates to roughly $67,000 in taxpayer dollars that the city manager will be paid out regardless if he makes $220,000 annually. That's money paid out for services the city receives zero return on. And yet, this request asks for more than even that significant amount. That is unfair to citizens and fiscally irresponsible. The same exact guy who continues to entertain and look for jobs elsewhere? You really want to support this? This is enough money to easily improve one of the parks in Cibolo, help fix a road, not fund the city manager's lifestyle. Nobody else gets this similar treatment. I urge council to reject this request and instead align with the spirit of the new state law ensuring fairness, accountability and transparency for the people of Cibolo. Thank you."
Donetta, go ahead.
I would just like to make a quick factual response to that. What you were talking, something was mentioned about not spending money for parks. Council has approved for parks, two parks to be improved. And as far as the compensation thing, Mr. Reed has not asked for additional severance or anything like that, so I'm not sure where that statement may have come into play, but I just wanted to make that a, a statement out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Donetta. We have one more?
One more.
Yeah.
This one is from Melinda Banks. "Good evening, mayor and council. I want to address the agenda item concerning the city manager's appointment, employment, evaluation and duties. Please reassure the public that you have no intention of signing a new contract before the new state law takes effect on September 1st, 2025. That law, as you know, was passed to protect communities from excessive payouts to executives who are terminated. It caps severance at 20 weeks, which is more than reasonable for someone who has failed in their role. The legislature recognized that communities across Texas were being burdened by large buyouts for managers who were no longer serving their residents. This matters for us, especially when we hear each year that the city is struggling financially. Entering into a contract that circumvents this new protection would feel irresponsible, similar to the concerns raised earlier this year about the $49,999 procurement contract that drew media attention. It is also worth noting that this manager has been a finalist for jobs in two other cities in the last year. That raises a very serious question. Why would we, as taxpayers, commit to providing additional relief or benefits beyond what state law will soon allow? Please show fiscal responsibility with our tax dollars. The community is already facing constant tax increases and we expect our leadership to put residents first, not provide golden parachutes for executives looking for their next job. Thank you, Melinda Banks."
Thank you. Next up is item number nine, public hearing. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request for a zone change, excuse me, from general commercial C4 to light industrial I1 for certain real property located at 13042 IH10 West, legally described as ABS 134 Sir Jose Flores, 18.09 acres, ABS 134 Sir Jose Flores one acre, and ABS 134 Sir Jose Flores 10.33 acres. Mr. Spencer.
Good evening, mayor and council. The property owners are David and Olga Valente. The representative is Patrick Christensen. This is located at 13042 IH10 West, approximately 29.35 acres. This is south of Bolton Road and north of IH10. This is in Council Place 4. Future land use has this called out as compact residential. The existing zoning is general commercial C4 and the proposed zoning that's being requested is light industrial I1. The property owners are requesting a zone change from general commercial C4 to light industrial I1 for three parcels totaling 29.35 acres. The subject property is currently zoned C4 and is primarily surrounded by similarly zoned properties that are also C4. East of the property, near the intersection of Bolton Road and Zul Road, are properties with residential uses that are also zoned C4. To the west, near Bolton Road and Hakerville Road, lies undeveloped land with the same C4 zoning district. North of the property, across Bolton Road, are residential properties located with, within both Cibolo's ETJ and inside city limits. Those inside city limits are zoned agricultural homestead, AG. And to the south, across IH10, are properties that are within the C4 zoning district. Notice was published in the local newspaper, the Seguin Gazette, on July 27th and on the city's website, individual letters were sent by mail to eight property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. As of today, staff has received none in favor and none in opposition. Public hearings were scheduled for the August 13th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and today for city council. The approval and/or disapproval of the zoning ordinance is tentatively scheduled for city council's next meeting on September 9th. At its August 13th regular meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 1 to recommend approval of the requested zone change from general's commercial C4 to light industrial. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the time is 7:17 PM. I'm going to open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please come on up to the microphone.
Good afternoon, mayor. Patrick Christensen, 315 East Commerce, San Antonio, Texas. Just here to answer any questions you may have on behalf of the applicant. Thank you.
Okay. During the public hearing, are, we, we're not able to ask questions of the applicant?
Oh, understood.
So this is mainly just for the public or anybody who wants to present on behalf of the landowners, this is the time to do it.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, the time is 7:17, or 7:18, we're going to close the public hearing and move on to item number seven on the agenda, the consent agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting held on August 12th. B, approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on August 12th. And C, approval of the final plat of Steel Creek Unit 4A. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve 7A, B and C.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman Roberts. Motion carries 6-0.
Mayor, may I make a comment real quick?
Yes.
Mr. Reed, if we could actually, in this particular area I drove by, there's just a lot of debris in the road, like big rocks, because there's a lot of construction trucks going in and out. I went, that, this 4A, I scoped out the, the property and as I was driving in and out, there's just a lot in the road. Maybe we can, I don't know, Mr., I don't know what the requirements are of them keeping these roads clear of a lot of debris while people, residents live there, but it was substantial and there's just a lot of just dirt, rocks being scooped up right into the, the curb line and everything. So if they could just be more mindful and attentive that people, this is, these are their homes, these are their roads, and although they have the hard task of driving those construction trucks up, but maybe they could put a cover in the back, not allow these big giant rocks to go into the street. I'd appreciate it.
Yep. Ms. Sancha Stevens, we'll work with Julio Gomez and our construction inspectors to go out and inspect this area that you pointed out. If it is related to the construction, which it sounds that it is, they will be obligated to sweep the streets and clean the debris from the streets.
Next up is item eight of...
Which road was that?
Steel Creek, I think you know.
Going all the way towards the unit four.
Next up is eight, staff update. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, mayor. Give me one minute and I will pull up the report. And also, we have tonight Stephen Berry from Waste Connections. He will have an update on solid waste, but let me first do CIP and related. Mayor and council, as always, following this update, I will send this to you in an email, so you have it in writing and you are always free to share this with your constituents. Let me start off with the Cibolo Community Center renovations. The bottom line upfront is the project is currently ahead of schedule. Project completion is September 15th. That allows us to move in equipment and appliances for the senior program, allow the senior program leaders to get into the space and customize it before they start, we start official operations there. The electrical work is done. They're working on walls, taping and floating the drywall. Painting will begin on Friday pending color selection. City staff will be installing a protected crosswalk in the coming week. So that's on Main Street from the City Hall property over to the Cibolo Community Center. On FY '25 Street Rehabilitation Package Number One, on Deer Creek Boulevard, if you've been driving along it or by it, the work on the ADA ramps and curb on the north side are under construction, concrete... construction, concrete pour is scheduled for this Thursday, the 28th, weather permitting. Green Valley Road, Dean to Westmont, has substantial completion. Final lift of asphalt was completed. Striping is scheduled two weeks from now, September 8th, oh, September 5th. Green Valley Road, that's Sibilo Valley Drive to Green Valley Loop. Tentative schedule to start is September 8th. On street, and that's all in Street Rehabilitation Package One. Now on number two, Silverwing, Town Creek, and Firebird Run, estimated start date is September 8th for Silverwing. For Town Creek Road, estimated start date is September 22nd. Firebird Run, estimated start date is November. That's the status of these. I want to remind Council that this is the promise we made to our constituents when in 2019 they approved general obligation bonds, and the city said we will improve Sibilo Valley Drive and nine other roads. These roads represent the last of those roads, and when council approves the FY26 budget, it is no longer trying to address the promises of the past, but now making promises for the future. So I'm very happy that these projects are starting and that we will continue to hold the contractor accountable to the schedule, to the standards of improvements, and to the budget.
Which one did you say is starting on the 22nd?
Town Creek Road.
Town Creek Road, on the 22nd of?
September.
September.
Yes. And Silverwing is September 8th, and Firebird Run is in November.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed, if I could, Mayor, if I could. I may have missed it. Deer Creek Boulevard, when are we looking for completion, projected completion on that?
I will defer to Julio Gomez for the estimated completion date.
Yeah, so once we're done with the ADA ramps, it'll take us about 30 to 45 days with the rest of the application. So once we're done with that, the contractor will come in, Lone Star, the subcontractor will come in and do the road reconstruction part of the project.
So when are you looking at finishing the ADA ramps for that 30 to 45 days to start?
Yeah, so that, the ADA ramps start this Thursday and Friday. Will be done by Friday with the ADA ramps.
How many more are left?
That's it. So once we're done with the ADA ramps on this section of Deer Creek, then we're going to start with the road construction and then push through to get that, that section of Deer Creek.
So do you think those would be within like a week or so?
Yes. So we're hoping to get all the concrete poured out by Thursday and Friday. It just depends on the trucking and on the concrete that we're able to get.
Oh, so you're looking at this week finishing the ADA ramps and then, okay.
Yes. And then next week, we'll start scheduling the road reconstruction part of it.
So then the 30 to 45 days would be the entire scope of completion?
Correct.
So we're looking like maybe end of or mid-October?
Yes.
Okay.
And I capture that in the notes here so that that's included, with project completion sometime in October.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Reed?
I do.
Okay.
The Dry Creek Drainage Improvements, waiting on project schedule. The restoration will resume in approximately two weeks. So council will remember, this is an improvement that was made prior to the significant rain event that we had earlier this summer. We sent notice to the contractor that this is his issue to resolve. Julio Gomez with our city attorney's office and city engineer worked through that with them, and I'm looking at, Mr. Gomez, is there any other update you wanted to provide, council?
No, but when we went out there, we looked at the whole project. The project was built according to plan. The issue that we saw was that there was two big bellhose where we removed the trees. And when this rain event came in, we weren't done with all the restoration of it. So those two areas were exposed, and it's assumed by the amount of water that was going in there, and you saw how much water was going down Deer Creek, that it pushed that wall because there was a big void where those two trees were. So part of the restoration is to make sure that when they fill those holes back with material, we are doing it in proper lifts. So there is a specification that for each foot of dirt that we're filling in, we do have to compact it till we get to the actual elevation of the, of the wall itself. So that's what we'll be doing once we restore the walls. But the contractor is doing that, it is on the contractor. The city's not paying for that. It is an act of God that that occurred, and the contractor is responsible for redoing that rip route.
And this is DNS Construction. Sometimes people think DNS is DND. These are two different companies.
Yes, it's two different companies.
Moving on from, unless council has a question?
I've got, are you finishing your updates? Because I've got?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Tully Road, notice of intent, packets were mailed to property owners on August 20th. I have more updates here, but the project is moving progressively forward at this time. Town Creek Trail Project is, remains in design, and again, our holdup right now is UPRR. The FM 78 Water Main is under construction. That's the Water Main Extension that goes down to the Fun Town RV. No, excuse me, very sorry, wrong there. That's Buffalo Place to Shady Meadows. That's a different section of FM 78. And then the solid waste transition update, unless, before we go there and Stephen Berry speaks. Mr. Hicks, did you want to talk about a project related around CIP?
I've got a couple of projects.
All right, sir.
Had a gentleman on Green Valley Road reach out saying that he noticed that the ribbon curb where the asphalt meets their driveway, it doesn't look like it's finished. I mean, can you tell me that Green Valley Road is finished between Dean Road and 1103?
The limits were Dean Road to Westmont.
Well, to Westmont, but?
Yes, sir.
Y'all aren't going to, because he's saying that it's not meeting up in certain areas. So who checked that off?
What does he mean by doesn't meet up?
Well, I mean, the asphalt's not meeting up to where the curb was before. I mean, he's got a bump in his, in his road where, I mean, we should have brought it back to where it was beforehand.
Mr. Hicks, can you give us the address and contact?
I will afterwards.
And obviously, we always will work with the property owners.
The fiber along FM 1103 where they're putting that in, I hope that they're moving that out of the right of ways where we don't have, when 1103 comes in, they've worked very hard on that project. I don't want us to have the fiber, because I noticed that they were out there laying fiber this past week along 1103.
Is this AT&amp;T?
Whoever's laying fiber.
Okay.
Y'all would know that. I don't question them.
So that is a text dot project. Do we be happy to just reach out to the text dot representative?
I just want to make sure the fiber is, I mean, it's new fiber that's going in.
Yes, sir.
So it's not that it's a text dot project. I mean, it's going along 1103, but I want to make sure that it's out of the right of ways where when we do go to start cutting the road, that we're not having to move fiber again. I get tired, sick and tired of, you know, us doing something and then having to go back and redo it again because y'all know my frustration on that.
And Mr. Hicks, the city's doing no fiber install along FM 1103. We will?
Somebody is.
Yes, sir, but it's, I just want to clarify for the public record.
Yes.
The city is not doing this. You're concerned that there's somebody installing fiber, and it is a text dot project. We will reach out to text dot by email and just bring this to their attention. Is there an area along FM 1103 where you saw this happening? So I can just?
Buffalo Crossing back to AutoZone. Then I had a lady approach me about replacing the fences. Has to go back to permitting. She went and she put in a pool. Going, you put in a pool, I know that the mayor has had one put in. You have to have a fence put up, but you've got to take down that fence to be able to get the construction in to put the pool in.
Yes, sir.
Joel, I don't think this pertains to anything on the list.
It does. It has, it has pertain to updates that I need him to look at.
Could you handle this through an email between Mr. Reed? I don't want to?
Well, I want the public to, I mean, that's the only way to hold people accountable nowadays.
Well, just CC, you know, a couple of other people on it and just handle this through the email, please.
With all due respect, Mayor, I mean, we gave the city manager ample opportunity to give a presentation.
We did. He gave a presentation during citizens' meeting.
A council member who would like to give concerns for residents.
Unless it's on this agenda, you know, I want to, I want to stick to what's on here for staff update, okay?
I disagree.
Okay. So do we have a presentation from the Waste Management?
Stephen Berry, if you'll come up here and give us an update on how things are going.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Steve Berry with Waste Connections, and we are at about 30 days, 24,000 carts delivered, hundreds of commercial carts. And I can honestly say, this is my 12th transition, and I think it has been the smoothest one in my career, and I think there's a lot of reasons why. First of all, I think the city has done an outstanding job of communications with the residents through your social media, your Facebook, and getting the word out, and also operations. Jason Rowe, who said to say hello to everybody, worked very hard with our team, brand-new trucks, and getting everything out there and running it, I think, very smoothly. But now we're moving into a different phase, and that is something I'm very excited about. And this is our household hazardous waste program that the council put into our contract. And we are one of the only ones that I know around here that actually has this program. We're launching it, and tonight we're having the world premiere of our video again. I'm very excited. And by the way, these videos and all this stuff, no tax money's been involved in any of this, and actually, this is outside of our contract terms. It's something that we really wanted to do, and I'm very excited. The other thing, too, is just kind of take a step back. The average resident will have about 25 pounds of household hazardous waste and e-waste per home. Now, if you take that and multiply it by the 12,000-something homes in Sibilo, you're looking at about 150 tons. Now, to put that in perspective, if you took that council chamber right here and put a giant dumpster in here, it would take eight of those filled to the brim of hazardous materials. And what you're doing by this program, which doesn't cost the residents anymore, is you're giving them the opportunity to take all that stuff out of, from the landfill, and also, it's actually dangerous to our drivers, our transfer stations. We have a lot of chemicals, everyday chemicals, like, you know, ammonia and chlorine tablets and things like that mixed together. Lithium batteries blow up and explode when they get punctured, and we've lost millions of dollars of equipment, by the way, just in the last five years from that. And now, all this will be able to be taken out on a very easy program. We're going to, by the way, this flyer, which by the way is going to be in the Community Impact next month to every home in Sibilo, and we really want people to use this program. And it's unlimited, and there's no additional cost to anybody to use it. So with that, I really would like to run this video, the world premiere of it here. I got this, and then I go to this.
Hi, I'm Katie Cunningham, Sibilo City Council. I'm here to give my family exciting new program that's just for Sibilo residents. We all have items like these around the house, things that don't belong in our trash. I'm excited to announce that, starting now, Sibilo has a new household hazardous waste and e-waste curbside pickup program available to every resident at no extra charge. Just go to WMAtYourDoors.com or call the number on your screen to schedule a pickup of each W and E waste item right from your home at no cost. It continues with your monthly trash collection service. Be sure to place your bagged items by your front door or garage doors before 7:00 AM on the day of your scheduled pickup. Please do not place the items near the curb as they can be confused with bulk trash and be landfilled. There's no limit to how many times you can use this service and no limit to the amount of material you can dispose of responsibly. And remember, there's no extra charge for our residents. Accepted items include paint, cool chemicals, pesticides, batteries, e-waste like old computers, monitors, and TVs. By using this service, you're helping protect our landfills, our water supply, and our environment for future generations. Let's keep Sibilo safe and beautiful together.
I love it.
There you go.
Great job.
I'm very excited about that. Also, hands up to Chris Larson for Blue Horizon Media, did a wonderful job. Actually, we're looking at using him for a couple more segments, maybe our compost and mulch program future down the road. But with that, that ends my presentation. If you had any questions or any concerns, yes.
Do we need to contact, if we have a hazardous waste, we need to contact that 800 number to get the bag, and then it will be dropped off?
Right. So there's two ways you can do it. You can call the number, which we are actually recommending people do because they have a lot of people online, because sometimes it's complicated. There's certain things that you need to do, and, but they also have it online, too. There's a form that you can do it. The other benefit to this is that 92% of all these liquids are recycled, and that's even higher than the percentage from the recycling. So that's another benefit by using this program, and we really do want to broadcast this and have, I don't care if people call daily if they want to, because there's no, there's no extra charge for it. And so this will be going out, and it's, I know it's on the website right now. So we're very excited about this, and thank you for everybody in the communication with the departments, and we're still here. We're still here to help in anything else that you need.
Thank you very much for all the support that you've provided. Katie, do you want to?
I'm just saying, my daughter is very patiently awaiting her Oscar, and she's ready to sign autographs if anyone's looking. She had a lot of fun. Y'all did a great job.
Yeah, it was good. Thank you.
Miranda, go ahead.
Sir, I just wanted to say thank you. It's been an excellent transition. Thank you to Mr. Reed and his staff as well. It, just in my neighborhood in particular, it started out probably rocky, I guess. People, a lot of folks didn't read, and, but first couple of days, first couple of weeks when they figured out the trash wasn't there on that day, everybody came, and I've noticed the last two weeks, your drivers have been extremely courteous and are assisting people to get rid of their extra trash and get where we can get in a normal cycle, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
I did have one more thing. What is the best way for neighbors to reach out if they did not have a pickup, if they had a missed pickup? Spring Tree mentioned that they had a bulk pickup that was scheduled for Friday that wasn't picked up. So should they call that 1-800 number, or should they report it through the app? Is there a specific?
I mean, as far as the, well, the 800 numbers for the, for this, that, this is the household hazardous waste program. So they should just call our customer service now.
Okay.
And then, Ms. Cunningham, you said on what road?
It's Spring Tree Neighborhood.
Spring Tree Neighborhood.
They missed bulk, they did not have their bulk picked up.
Okay. What I will do, for Spring Tree Neighborhood?
Yes.
I will email Jason Rowe, who, right, is the on-the-ground man. I will mention that there were residents who said that their brush and bulk pickup did not occur on Friday. He will send a crew out to look in that neighborhood. So I'm telling you, they don't have to do anything. You can communicate with them that they will go back around to check on it.
So if we have residents reach out, we're directing them just to call customer service? That's the most direct route?
Yes. On an ongoing basis, things will be missed, right? We have humans operating these trucks and driving these routes. Going forward, there's a point after maybe 60 days of us doing this where?
Yeah, we've been taking a lot of extra.
Yes.
So just to clear it out. In fact, I was talking to Ron Henry down here. He had brush that he needed to get rid of, and I go, you're a commercial customer, but that's okay. We'll take care of you. And we did.
All righty. So I will send that email right now.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks again.
Thanks.
All right. Next up is item number nine. Discussion action on a joint election agreement and election services contract between Guadalupe County, Mayon Independent School District. Is that Marion? This would be. Okay. Marion Independent School District, City of Sibilo, City of Shirts, City of Kingsbury, Nixon Smiley Consolidated Independent School District, Shirts-Sibilo Universal City Independent School District, Guadalupe County Groundwater Conservation District, Sibilo Creek Municipal Authority, also known as CCMA, and Crystal Spring Special Utility District for the, to conduct a joint election to be held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Valerie Chapman.
Yes, sir. So, Mayor and Council, this is just the contract that we sign every time that we partner with the county to conduct our elections for us. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
No questions. So we have a motion?
Motion to approve joint election agreement.
Second.
Please vote on your screens. Next up is item 9B, discussion action on changing the date of the council meeting scheduled for? for October 28th, 2025. Peggy Simics.
Sir, this is to change the date because of TML. We have the majority of the council going to the TML conference. We'll only have three people left here, which is not enough to have a council meeting. So the October 28th council meeting, we wanted to find out if you wanted to move it to Monday, the 27th, or if you wanted to move it to the week before, which we could do it on the 22nd or the 23rd. I just leave the actual date up to the council and what date that they would like to have it. We really need to have a second council meeting in October because we only have one council meeting in November.
Go ahead, Joel.
I would suggest October 27th, on that Monday. It's one day off. But we won't have one, you're right, November or December. We don't have one each of those days, months.
And we actually need to look at the November one also because it's a holiday.
Okay.
Where we normally would have our council meeting. Yeah.
Councilman Mahoney?
Does anybody have a conflict about the 27th, that Monday?
I don't have a conflict, no. I think that's okay.
A simple answer.
You want to make that motion?
Make a motion to schedule October 28th, 2025 regular council meeting to October 27th, Monday, 2025.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Motion carries 6-0. All right, next up is item 9C, discussion action on the opening and the reservation of the multi-event center starting mid-September and limiting the use to Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday. Peggy Simics and Mr. Howard.
Yes. So the multi-event center has been closed for quite some time now, and so we do want to open it again. And I think David here can kind of explain a little bit on how the field has improved because it's been closed. And we want to be able to make sure that that field stays have, in a decent way. That's why we would like to suggest only the four days. I suggested the Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and Sunday for a reason, is because most of the tournaments are on Saturday and Sunday. So Monday, the field would rest. They could have practice on a Tuesday, rest that field again, so they would have a Thursday practice. And Friday, it'd be off before they have that field open for full play on Saturday and Sunday.
And they can go to church on Wednesday.
So prior to this meeting, a few months back, council should remember that there was once a agreement that we were, that we put out, a bid that we put out for potentially getting the field replaced. That bid came out upwards to about $200,000. Unfortunately, and fortunately, we didn't have to go and replace the entire field because we were able to let the field rest and we closed the field off. One of the benefits of doing somewhat of a reduced schedule is being able to ensure that our premier field stays a premier field. I think it would be the best, in the best interest of the city and taxpayer dollars for us to reduce the amount of usage on the field to be able to ensure that our premier field stays a premier field.
Also, I'd also like to find out, in the past, you know, relentless soccer has used the field, and they've used it four days out of the week. And by only having the field open on four days, are you going to have relentless soccer use that field on all four of those days? Or are we going to let them possibly use the field one day during the week and one of the weekends? You've had several other teams, Cibolo teams, in the last few months come to the city council asking about utilizing the field. I've had several calls from other teams here in Cibolo wanting to use our, the multi-event center also. So I would need to find out what council wants us to do on that, too. I mean, it's, we do have a contract. The contract is going, is being looked at by our attorneys so that its field's not ready for at least the eighth or the following week before it can be opened. But we do need some input from council if you want, if it's good for the four days, and how do you want us to do those contracts? Do you want us to, again, just have relentless soccer utilize it? Or do we open it to a couple of other teams also?
Okay, we understand. Katie?
Yeah, so as mentioned, we have a multi-year agreement that council approved a year or two ago for use of that soccer field. They have not been on the field because we've been trying to rehab it. But prior to that, there were not really any issues with the field. So my question is, I know Mr. Craighead, when he was here, he was a grass expert, like that was his old degree, it was grass, and he was very proud of it. And he talked to me about the mowing and the, I don't understand, like, anything that was coming out of his mouth regarding it. But he, there was a specific way to take care of the grass that allowed it to be maintained, even with heavy use. So I would like to see what it takes to get back to that. Because cutting down the use, I understand, totally get it. We don't want the field to get bad. But we had it used at its current usage rate, if not more, and we weren't having the field issues. So nothing with the usage changed, but the field condition did. And we've had rainier season this year where you would think that the grass would be in better condition than when we were in a drought. So I don't want to just cut off the use of the field, especially since we have an active contract with this group that council voted on. They've been good partners for the city. They've used it very frequently. I think that is something that we could discuss with them, is do they need it every Saturday and Sunday? Because I think that's part of their agreement, is Monday, Wednesday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I don't, I don't think they need it every single Saturday and Sunday. But I don't know that, I'm not sold that cutting down the usage completely is going to solve anything. Because if we're not maintaining the field, four days of usage is still going to trash it. If, if we, I'm also not sold on canceling a contract that we have when they haven't done anything wrong. But I'm also not sold on allowing them to commandeer it and be the only ones that can use it if we're only allowing it for four days. So I think that there needs to be more of a discussion in on that. And until we come up with some kind of finalization, because they have a contract with us, I would like them to be able to practice.
We don't actually have a written contract.
Why do we not? Because that was something that council asked back then.
We do not have a written contract with them.
Well, we should have, because we said that they, we would have a contract with them to use the field when we did that. I know they have a contract with the YMCA for the blood bond. The second thing is additional fields. We have a lot of space, and I brought this up a bunch. We have a bunch of space off of Schaefer Road by the water tower that is pretty flat. For practice, you don't really need much. I know this is a high-level field, and my kids are not playing high-level sports, but I don't think it probably costs that much to flatten out some area and put up some soccer goals. The City of Marion has their baseball fields, that the Marion Baseball Club, I don't remember what they're called, but they maintained it. The City of Marion owned the fields, the baseball club maintained it. Shirts has something similar at Pickwell Park where they have some fields that other organizations maintain. This, because this organization wants some kind of stability, the soccer club that we currently have a contract with wants some stability, that's probably something we should look into. If they just need two fields to practice on, let's see how much it costs to put two fields together and see if they're willing to mow it and maintain it. And that's their trade-off for renting the space. Then it opens up the MECC again, it opens up the space for us. That's not a, like, quick turnaround solution. But I think moving forward, because we have gotten so many requests over and over again for football, for soccer, for baseball, for, for everything, we need to have more spaces. And again, not a parks expert, but I feel like a soccer field is probably one of the cheaper things to put in, a practice soccer field, not a fancy one, but like a practice flat area with dirt and grass and some soccer nets. I don't feel like that would be too expensive. And if we aren't using that 200K that we had thought we would be using for the MECC, maybe we could utilize that to flatten out some areas and get access to bathrooms or whatever they need. But I know that this soccer club has reached out to me, and Mr. Howard answered a call on the fly to discuss it. Mr. Reed has been working as well on this. They just need an answer. We did, we told them that we were going to contract with them. I believe it was, it was either three or five years, I can't remember, but we said that it would be a longer-term agreement, that we would allow them to use the field. And I think that we need to, at minimum, get something in writing moving forward with them. Because they are an organization, kids who play sports competitively like that, I know Mr. Reed's done, did. That's a huge commitment for the parents, it's a huge commitment for the kids. And when your locations of practices are changing frequently, you don't have a home base, that causes trouble. You can lose players from your team, and then you, it just starts spiraling from there. So overall, short, long story short, I want to, I'm making it short now, Mark, I'm summarizing in summary. I'd like to see about the agreement that we currently have, and if we don't have a contract, why don't we? What is our agreement with this soccer club moving forward? I'd like them to at least get their Monday, Wednesday practice. Secondly, the care of the grass, why is it not lasting when it did before? And then the potential of additional fields being put in with that money that we had.
So I do have a few answers.
I'm going to give Mr. Howard a chance to respond.
Yeah, no. So although we are lacking having premier fields, we don't lack entirely the field spacing. Veterans Park is a space that can be used. The problem is that teams don't want to use it. That has been offered to Mr. Kelly on many occasions, but they don't want to use the space. The same with the space that is over near the sports complex. I agree. If you are just practicing, it is a space that can be utilized. But the teams have to want to use the space. So it's not for lack of it not being offered to the teams, the teams have to want to use the space. And I think that's where there can be, there should be a little bit of give and take. Because if that space is utilized, then it could allow for the premier field, which is our MECC, to be kept in a pristine, in a pristine state. Another thing that council may not realize is, last year, in the year that I've been here, someone within the organization on Mr. Kelly's team had access and flooded the field on many occasions. That was another reason why the field got into the space that it got into, because it got flooded, which was something that we handled in-house, it was something that we took care of, and we did talk to Mr. Kelly and his organization about it. But those are the little things that are kind of creating a domino effect of why the field is getting into the position that it's gotten into. Mr. Kelly did an amazing job managing the fields. One of the things that Mr. Kelly brought to the organization that we didn't have is he had a professional pesticide application license, which allowed him to have access to top-tier pesticides and chemicals to put on the fields. Once he left, between him leaving and me getting here, the field did not get serviced like it should have, and I've been here for now almost 15 months. So since Mr. Kelly left and since I've been here, there hasn't been any of the chemicals that was previously used on the, on the fields. We're still working and we're putting some of the stuff on the fields, but again, like I said, when you start having a domino effect of the field getting flooded, now, although yes, the usage hasn't changed, they're still using it at the same amount, but based off of my conversation with Peggy, they've used it more days, but also their league is growing. So whereas maybe before, they may have used it maybe five days a week, they may have only had maybe 40 kids, their organization is growing. So because their organization is growing, you see the variety of small kids, adults, and now the impact is starting to change. Anyone who's been a part of youth athletics, one of the things that helps train kids is whenever you go to a practice, you have them practice in the same area all the time. If you would have seen the field, you'll see those specific areas where the field is being used more frequently than other areas because they tear up that area. So one of the things that we also discussed was making sure that whoever uses the field has like a mandatory rotation on the field. So that way, one particular area of the field is not being damaged or overused.
May I also ask what the status is on the irrigation? Because I know that the irrigation system itself, was that also already repaired and ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've installed a new irrigation controller. That irrigation controller allows the facility maintenance team to be able to use or water the, turn the irrigation system on remotely and based off of their phones.
And how often, what are the hours that relentless actually wants to use the facility?
I'm not sure the hours that he wants to use it.
Just the duration of time? Because it almost sounds like if it's exclusively them, that it would not be open and available to the other teams that want to use it.
No, he would normally use it starting at 4:00 in the afternoon. Sometimes he gets in there, and then they use it up until maybe 7, 8:00 at night. And on Saturdays and Sundays, they have tournaments. So they start earlier in the day, earlier. They probably start around 9:00, and then they use, utilize the field until maybe 4:00, 5:00 in the afternoon. The biggest problem we had with Reese was they marked their own field, but when they're marking their field, that's a rental. They just don't get out on the field and take their, their, their five hours or whatever they want to do to do the field without renting that field, just like we, that was no different than anyone else. We do have a fee to rent that field even for, if they want to do their own striping. It's much, much cheaper for them to do that than our striping, but it's still, they're utilizing that field, there's still a rental fee. And they would always constantly go into that field and not pay that fee. But we talked to Mr. Reese about that, and that, I think, has been solved.
Okay.
So I believe that that part is not going to be an issue going forward.
Donetta, go ahead. I want to make sure to give every council member at least one opportunity to speak, and then we'll see, if time permitting, if we have time for more. Go ahead, Donetta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought we had discussed at one of our previous council meetings that we were going to be looking at the fees for renting that field, if we were going to be opening it back up to teams. And I'm sorry, I just have to disagree with you a little bit in regards to the teams not wanting to use other areas. I've driven by Veterans Park daily and see about three or four teams out there practicing. So there are people utilizing these other areas. So you saying that they're not using them is, right, because they're not actual fields, they're just practice, practice flat areas. But I think we truly need to look at the fees and then whether or not it's going to be just for, I don't think it should be for one team.
So we've, and Ms. Donetta, you're right. When I, when I say that the teams don't want to use it, I mean, the teams that are requesting to use our premier fields, that's requesting to use Nimitz Park and/or the MECC, they're only specifically asking for those fields. So although, yes, there are teams that are using Veterans Park, those are teams that have simply said, hey, look, we just want to use a space. We're not picky, we just want somewhere where we can practice. I've even had a resident come and ask me, could they use the space at Schlotter Park? Because they're just, we have some teams in some organizations that are just simply looking for space. But then we have some teams, like Mr. Kelly, who doesn't want those space, who doesn't want to use those types of facilities. He only wants to use the MECC field. And something that you guys may not also know... And something that you guys may not also know, when Mr. Kelly initially called, I reached out to the YMCA personally and I said, hey, look, we have a user that is, um, we have an agree, or an agreement with Mr. Kelly, the Manchester United Organization. They currently use the MECC field. Would you guys consider adjusting your calendar to be able to let them use the backfield of the MECC? And he said, yes, we will let him know that he can reach out to us. I followed up with, um, him, his name is Demonte Phillips, he works for, he's in charge of the sports for the YMCA. He said, hey, we have all of the practice dates, but Mr. Kelly won't give us his game dates. So it's not that Mr. Kelly did not have a space to practice or play his games, he doesn't want to use the backfields. So I just want to make that clear because not only did I clarify that, but I have that in an email that, hey, we have his dates. We, we're not really sure what you mean when you say he says he doesn't, he doesn't have a space available because we've already connected with him. Mr. Kelly specifically just doesn't want to have his games on the backfield. And that's where there's a miscommunication. So I don't want there to be this perception that there isn't space for teams to use. If a team truly wants to use a space, they'll be willing to use any flat area of surface just as you recommended, but we have some teams who, who don't want those areas.
Okay, I'm gonna recognize Katie and then, and then we'll ask from.
And on the fees, we, you do have, we, right now, we're using the 2025 fee schedule because we're still in utilizing that through the end of September. One October, if you remember, there was a 2026, um, proposed fee schedule and the fees are increasing, um, for fiscal year '26. And whoever utilizes the MECC, they all pay the same price. It doesn't matter if it's one team, if it's team one or team two, whoever, everyone pays the same fee depending upon how long they utilize the field. There's no special fee for anyone.
Well, no offense, $25 or $50 is not paying $200,000 for flooding the field and us having to pay to fix it again. So we've got to think about that aspect of it as well.
And the reason why the rates are what they are for the fields is because we also wanted to make it comparable to what the surrounding cities. So before we determined what the rates were, myself, Anna, Julio, we did research on what the surrounding cities are offering for the same type of field spacing and we wanted it to be comparable and competitive. We didn't want to, um, overly price or price out the, um, residents for using our facilities. We wanted to make it a competitive rate and we didn't think it would be fair, um, for the citizens to have a, almost a hundred dollar change in renting a space. So that was one of the reasons that impacted the, um, price that we went with for our rentals.
So, oh no, I forgot what I was saying, you distracted me. So I think there's a, a difference here. I think I'm, what I'm hearing, and I know it's, it's not a negative, but I'm hearing, well, they should just take what they can get. There's a difference between SaySat, which is what my kids play, that's Land O' Lake Butter sponsored, their little free jerseys that come with their $70 registration fee. There's a big difference between that soccer group that does practice at an HOA park without nets and a soccer club where they're paying thousands of dollars to be on that team, they're paying a lot, a lot of money to compete, they're traveling around the state. There's a huge difference. So can my nine-year-old go and play at an HOA park on a level piece of grass that doesn't have, or level-ish piece of grass that doesn't have a marked field? Sure. Can some of these teams go and play at Veterans Park because it's a flat area that doesn't have markings? Absolutely. But that's not every team, just like not every football team is going to be able to play on just a flat piece of grass. There, we had the Sibolo Spartans, there's a couple other teams in our area that are competitive teams, which like we have competitive baseball teams that they can play at Alrich Park, but that feels not great. It's better for T-ball than it would be for a, a competitive team. We have a need, it's a growing need. I would hate to lose a competitive team or club of any kind because we're not working out a solution. Those competitions, they come for a whole weekend. These, these events where they have multiple games, that brings in people from all over the city and all over the state. They come to downtown because they're right here, they're eating at the restaurants. It doesn't have to be a soccer, a soccer game, it doesn't, it could be football, it could be whatever that can be played on that field. So I do understand the desire to allow more people to play, but I think that we have, as Sibolo grows, we're not just a little SaySat soccer teams that are here. We have competitive teams that want to play here. Um, all of our demographics, all of the census data shows that we have a high, uh, a higher income level. And a lot of people with higher income levels, they tend to have more kids who are able to play club sports because they have that disposable income where they can afford to put their kids in club sports. Uh, and that's, we've got to know what our, what our community wants and what, what our community is, is, has kids involved in. We've got to expand. And I, I don't know how to make this work, we need more fields. We've said we've needed more fields for years and years and years. I would not consider Veterans Park a field. It is a flat area, it is not marked. I would not consider Alrich a field, I would not consider Stone Brook my neighborhood. We have a flat area, you could practice soccer out there if you wanted to, but it's not a field, it's not big enough. Um, speaking with Mr. Reese Kelly, he, they need two fields, they have grown. Sibolo has been a great location for them to grow. They've had a ton of people come in from the area that have wanted to join the club because it's a central location, it's easy for them to get to after work, and they, they like the club, they like the area. So they, they have grown and they do need those two practice fields. The MECC and that backfield are the only, the only two fields that we have right together where they can have enough space to practice. So I don't think that he's like poo-pooing every other field that we have, think it's a space issue. And when he's the main coach and it can't be in two places at once, that causes some issues. So maybe it's that we, I don't, I don't know how to solve it, but I just, my mind keeps going to the Shafer land or any of the other flat areas that we have. If they're willing to mark it up, shoot, go take some spray pan out there and make a square.
You know, and I understand elite teams wanting a good field. I mean, when I was young and he was on an elite soccer team, um, Mia Hamm, who was a great soccer player, he was on a team with Mia Hamm Elite Team for years, all the way through, uh, elementary school through high school. Um, they played together. And so I understand because they had to be on a field that was a better playing field because they went all over the state of Texas to play and outside of Texas. And so I understand the field that he would want to utilize because it is an elite team. It's just so many other people wanting to use, utilize the field too. We're just trying to find out what council wants us to do. I don't think Mr. Howard or I care which team uses the field or whatever, we just want your guidance to tell us, how do you want us to do it? That's all. Uh, I, yeah, I know that every team that wants to use the field, they, they have a reason to want to do it, but I understand a lea-, elite team, I totally understand that.
Okay, I, I want to hear from a few other council members and then if anyone has a pro- proposition, we can consider it. Uh, Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I say give it to Relentless tonight. I mean, they can have it Saturday or Sunday and they can have it a Tuesday or Thursday. They've got the other field down there, that way we can let other organizations in here. You're saying we don't have a contract, that's fine. If we don't have one, it's not signed, it's too bad, too sad, I mean, it's so sad. But, um, you know, to, to monopolize a field, um, we can't do that. And as Ms. Cunningham said, you know, we, we can go, they've got other spaces around here, two miles up Sibolo Valley Drive, um, on the other night. And they can still continue to use the YMCA field, I'm sure they're not going to turn them down, but.
Well, let me, let me say about a contract, every person that utilizes the multi-event center does sign a contract.
Right.
But a contract just for one team to utilize, that's the type of contract we don't have.
Exclusive contracts, we don't do exclusive contracts.
Yes, every team that utilizes a field signs a contract.
That's what I'm saying.
Got it.
The exclusive one that we were talking about earlier, there isn't one. They have to sign a contract because they have.
Liability, right.
Liability and, and they have to prove that they've got insurance for their, their organization. Not only that, you know, they're, they're utilizing the restrooms whenever they rent this multi-event center. So absolutely, there's some type of contract that they've got to be able to maintain because they've got lights as well. My thing is, pick a, 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 one day in the week, one day on the weekend and, and move, move from there.
Yeah, I, I've always felt that no one team should be able to use it more than 50% of the time because that's not fair to the other teams that exist throughout our community. And so, and especially during football season, I think that we need to kind of pump the brakes on allowing, you know, one soccer team to monopolize a field. I understand, you know, when football season's over and we don't have any other takers, then sure, you know, it, it's better than nobody using it, I get it. But when it's football season, I think we need to pump the brakes and start allowing some football teams to be able to use that field. Um, I'm gonna ask Randy or Councilman Mahoney if they have any thoughts. Start with Randy. Yeah, well, start with Mahoney. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, going back to just the wording on the screen here, we, we've talked all about the environment, but, uh, limiting the use of the fields to just those four days, I think is a good idea, but I would, I think I would allow Friday on that list just simply because there's so many tournament-type things that come around that will include a Friday night game. And so I, I don't want to rule out Friday, I'd like to let the fields rest on Monday and Wednesday, but let Friday be an option for it to be used by somebody.
So, um, Councilman Mahoney, um, when we were renting the field, we never had anyone wanting to use it on Friday.
On Friday?
Yeah, we, I don't, can't remember.
It was my least rented day ever on, for any.
At any rate, I, I, I don't have strong feelings about the, have, having like a home team that monopolizes things. I, I've, I've seen both sides of that and my kids have been in some of those sports. I have a granddaughter involved in it now that I, I went to see her playing over at A&amp;M on the weekend and, and different places. So I know that environment, but those clubs have, that, that I've been around, they have their own private property that they're leasing, they're not city parks that they're dominating. So I tend to agree, Mr. Hicks and Mr. Allen, that since we're talking about a city park, yeah, we, we probably are not appropriate to let a single soccer club dominate or monopolize that calendar. But that's all I.
Thank you, sir. Randy?
Um, but probably, probably the main, main thing I'd like to just bring is, you know, the fields back there are paid for by our citizens. Everybody works and it's their money that goes towards that. I appreciate you being competitive with the pricing, but to use a term, we're not Walmart. We, we can't afford to leave them open all the time and repair them at the same time, not for a discounted rate, no. Uh, and, and if you charge more, they'll get used less and that's less work for us, less work for the staff. Flip side of that, less revenue for the city as far as our businesses. So i- it's a give and take, you just have to find a balance and we can spend all night up here on this, truly, and not come to a resolution.
I, I think I may have a resolution. If the council is truly committed to making an investment in the parks, if they're truly committed in making an investment in our youth athletic leagues and you were willing to spend the $200,000, being a math person, what I would do is put out an RFP or put out some type of, um, bid, split that $200,000 up into maybe a four-year deal and just do a, um, applications or a, um, maybe a contract with a local landscaping organization to see if they'll just do the spraying and the maintenance of all of our sports fields. And then if you did that over, I mean, that $200,000 could easily go for the next four years or you, I mean, it could go longer. And our park staff, we can cut it and all we would need is just someone to make sure that they're doing all of the spraying, to make sure there's no weeds on any of our sports fields and aerate it, especially after we have like our Sibolo Fest. One of the major things is, we bring in, one of the things that you have to realize, guys, there's no city that's going to put a Ferris wheel on their premier field. They're not bringing in a lot of high, high-traffic, high-level equipment and putting it on a premier field. They're just not going to do that. And if they're doing that, then they're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to ensure that that premier field stays a premier field after that happens. So that would be my recommendation. The staff, we can cut it, but having someone do the spraying and just putting it out for all of our sports fields, that might be a solution.
Well, Mr. Howard, uh, you know, that's a great idea, but I think everybody in this council knows we're in budget season and we are a tight, tight, tight budget this year. I don't see where we're gonna pull $200,000 from, so.
Okay, so Norma, what, I'm, I'm gonna recognize Norma and then I'm gonna call for a motion, okay?
Uh, really quick, uh, thank you for your recommendation. And I was thinking that if it was just a matter of having the pesticide certification and Mr. Kelly had it before, maybe it would be less for one of our guys to have that certification on staff and it wouldn't cost us $200,000. So that would be something I would, uh, recommend to staff consider and maybe bring back to council to see how much that would be because that would be probably more conducive to what we need. And as far as, uh, proposing maybe, I think a good middle ground and just hearing from other council members, um, to help Relentless Soccer because they are a club team, I would think that the weekends would be best for them if we could let them have their tournaments on the Saturday and Sunday. That way they have the duration of that entire day and I feel like they can, uh, go practice at other, it's always good to have some, a, a good location for a tournament, especially for soccer, that, that field is so good for tournament play. And I think they would appreciate that, they could lease it out at that time. And then also if, um, and so that way it leaves Tuesdays and Thursdays for the other teams, the other smaller teams. Um, but I would also like to see and revisit the fee schedule just as well. Um, that, that would be my recommendation, thinking that is a good compromise. I do realize that, you know, teams that usually practice on the same field, play, do their games on that, but I know also having had kids in soccer, they rotate, they rotate, they have home games, they have away games and these kids, I mean, I've seen them run with divots in the ground and not altogether perfect, uh, landscape. So I think that would be the best compromise if we had to make a decision tonight.
Okay, thank you, Norma. All right, um, I'm gonna call for a motion on this so that way we could, or, or if we want to table it, you know, if, if people need more time to consider it, tabling is always an option too.
I would like to table it. Um, I know that y'all are, just got a lot of feedback and I'm sure it'll percolate and you might get some more ideas. Mr. Howard came up with one while we were standing here. Um, so I, I would like to make a motion to table and then in the meantime, while we're waiting, uh, in the meantime, if you could kind of see how much it would cost to put in soccer fields down by, off of Shafer or at Warbler Woods or wherever we have open space, even if we're planning on building there in the future some point, it takes us forever to get projects started unfortunately. So we'll have open, if we have an open space, how much will it take to plop a field in?
Yeah, we have a motion on the table from Councilwoman Cunningham, seconded by Councilman Hicks. Please vote.
Nope, my paper's touching the thing.
So I have a question, you, so we are gonna keep it closed until we bring it back? Do you want it back at the next council meeting?
The next council meeting if possible.
Alrighty, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna do, um, item number D next, and I know, Mr. Reed, you wanted to go to executive session, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow us to go to item E and then executive session because we do have a lot of people in the audience that, that are, that came out for, for E specifically. I don't want to let them, I don't want to make them sit there while we're in executive session.
Yes, sir, and it was just for the first executive session, Project Theo.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna go, uh, to item D, which is discussion action to approve a mutual termination agreement between the City of Sibolo and the Centicos Sibolo Theater Realty LLC, which shall cease the Chapter 380 Economic Incentive Agreement between the two parties and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Clancy will tell you. Clancy Harden?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Clancy Harden, Economics.
Clancy Harden, Economic Development Manager. What I have before you this evening is a mutual termination agreement between Santicos and the City of Sibolo. I'll provide a little bit of background on how we got here, and then I realized in the packet when I was going over this yesterday that my screenshots that I mentioned in the packet did not transfer, so I have those in here if you have questions related to that. In 2019, the city entered into this agreement with Santicos to bring Santicos to the community. This outlays the terms that we came to in 2019. Santicos would employ 40 employees and swell up their part-time employees during peak time, and then have an annual payroll of $2 million. In return, the city would give a 50% rebate on general fund sales tax, and that's collections, and a grant of $23,500 from the Sibolo Economic Development Corporation, and a rebate of the maintenance and operation of property tax for the first three years of the agreement, and then a rebate of 50% of the M&amp;O for the remaining two years. These, all these incentives were capped at $150,000 a year, so whichever way we got there was capped at that $150,000. 2020, we experienced a COVID pandemic. We amended this deal to delay its implementation. Council approved that seven to zero to delay the implementation of this. We waited a year, and 2021, we came back and we had to do the same thing. Santicos, the film industry was taking a beating during the pandemic. And in 2023, we amended again for a 6-0 vote, and this basically put the deal back into play with some other terms, and we lowered the, we kept the 40 full-time jobs threshold, but we eliminated the part-time swell-up. That brings us to 2025. Earlier this year, we were doing our compliance checks. We were notified by Santicos, who hadn't requested their incentive in the past two years, that they will no longer be applying for it due to some changes in the San Antonio Area Foundation and some changes in their organizational structure. So, over that time, we've been talking to them about the best way to exit this plan. There was one way where we could just let the plan expire, but that holds money on our budgets, so it holds money in the UDC budget, and then our finance department has to hold our liabilities. So, we came up with a mutual termination agreement. What you're seeing in front of you is just the financial impacts of the deal as it was originally presented. So, $150,000 a year, the initial five-year term, roughly $700,000, and then if we exercised the two-year option, it would swell up to $956,500. And what you're seeing here is the actual payments that were made underneath, under that economic development deal. So, we weren't even hitting that $150,000 threshold with what they submitted for their incentives. The red for years three and four, they didn't submit, so those are cost savings for the city. That's money we did not pay out under this agreement. So, total, since this agreement's been put in place, we've paid out $191,027. What you see before you here is just a breakdown, maximum incentives, years one through five, a little under $700,000, years six through seven, $256,750. The total agreement should have played out the way it was supposed to, would have been $956,500. Now, we are saving money, so years one through four, we saved about $508,000 from non-submittals. And then years three and four, where they did not submit, $256,000. So, overall savings with this whole agreement would be a little under $640,000. And that concludes my presentation. The Economic Development Corporation did exercise their right on their mutual termination agreement to terminate their portion of the deal, and they did that last Thursday, so it didn't make it into this packet, but they approved to mutually terminate their jobs grant, is what it was, $23,500.
Make a motion to approve the mutual termination agreement.
Okay, please vote. Thank you, Clancy.
Thank you.
And stick around, we'll go into executive session for one of the projects in just a minute. I want to get to E first.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next up is item 9E, discussion action regarding the preliminary acceptance of public infrastructure for Saddle Creek, Unit 9A.
Good evening, Saddle Creek, Unit 9A. The developer, 5GB1 LLC, has petition for preliminary acceptance of the infrastructure. This is Unit 9A. There have been more than eight previous units. That totaled out, it's 739 lots. We have, we have conducted a punch walk, we generated a punch list, and the contractor has addressed all items on the punch list. There is 1,000 feet of sanitary sewer, and then 1,763 linear feet of streets, and a little bit of miscellaneous drainage. The total value of public infrastructure being dedicated to the city is $689,323. Again, we have prepared a punch list, they have addressed all punch list items. At the last council meeting, y'all did deny this, and Councilwoman Cunningham requested a meeting with the developer and their engineer. We did have that meeting a week and a half ago. And so, with that, I am recommending preliminary acceptance of the infrastructure, first, Unit 9A.
Do we have any questions from anybody on city council? Katie?
I feel like I've talked a lot today, I'm sorry, everyone. How many more units are left after this one?
One more.
Just one more unit?
Nine B is the last one.
So, here's, here's where I'm torn. I mentioned it earlier, I really want a meeting between everyone to figure this out, because this is ridiculous. But I also don't know how right it is to continue to kick this particular section down the road, or keep denying it, because other things are not being addressed, because I'm not sure how much they're intertwined. Be like me saying, you're fired because someone up here did something wrong. Like, you know what I mean? Like, it's, I don't know how much they're correlated. That meeting that we had was very enlightening. It showed me that more is being done behind the scenes than what we are seeing on our end. GBSUD reached out, and they said that they went and rebuilt that fire hydrant. I don't know if that's going to solve anything in that location. But I'm torn on this, because there are some very serious, very real concerns from the HOA on land that they're being handed. More houses are pouring in, and then they're being left cleaning up the mess. We have very real concerns from residents over here with drainage issues. Something has to give, but I don't know where the right thing is. I don't know what the right thing is to do. Do we keep, do we deny this one for a third time? Until something happens, until it's fixed? I don't know. Did they mow? That was one of the things that was supposed to happen prior to this meeting.
I should have mentioned, the developers, engineer, and representative are here.
That was one of the things that they said that they would do prior to this meeting, was mow the areas that needed to be mowed. The second thing that they said they were going to do was...
I'll allow them to come on up. If you're interested, please, come to the microphone.
The issue that we addressed during our walkthrough specifically was an area in Unit 7? That, where there's a huge intersection that's just failing. There's a fire hydrant that was leaking, it was actively leaking as we were there, something around the fire hydrant was leaking, and they had been in contact with GBSUD. They showed the conversations between them and GBSUD, trying to figure out what this issue was. The construction person was there, and he was talking about how they're going to rebuild the road with b-boy, or concrete, or something, I don't know, something fancy to make the road a little more stronger so it won't fail again. And they were pointing out different issues. So, I under, I know that they're actively working to try to fix that issue. There were other things that were raised that they were actively trying to do, the mowing, they addressed, they had that contract in hand where they were going to have it mowed. There are other issues, though, that the HOA has pointed out, like being given property for amenities that is completely inaccessible, because they've built houses around all of it. There is no entry to it. It's just a big piece, and it's stuck. Well, nobody can get to it, unless you have a helicopter to transport people, or a tunnel. So, I, there, it's two separate things, so I don't know that, I don't know that approving or denying is going to make the issues go away or make them worse. But I don't know what, what we have in our tool belt that we can use to fix those issues. The issues have to be fixed, that's non-negotiable. These issues that the HOA is having have to be fixed, period. The issues that these residents are having, we have to address those. But I don't know that continuing to deny this is going to be the best tool that we have, but I don't know what that is. So, I'm looking for any kind of feedback from you, or from our attorney, or from the city manager. How do we, what do we have in order to hold the people accountable that need to be held accountable to fix these things? But this has been a four-year thing.
Well, I should address the drainage concerns that were mentioned on Weedner Road earlier. The units in question right now, 7, 8, 9, 9A and 9B, do not drain to Weedner Road. They drain to a separate tributary that goes south, so it was the original Saddle Creek that drains to that area, and actually, the current developer wasn't involved in the first six units.
Okay.
They purchased 7, 8, and 9.
Okay.
So, that's all that they're working on.
That answers, that answers one section of that. But for these other issues, I don't think that you, as the engineer or the representative, I think you're going to be the ones that have the answers to that. So, do we hold up this, this section? What is that going to do? Is it, is it going to fix anything? But what do we have in place that we can do to hold it accountable so we can fix these things for the HOA?
We still have final acceptance on 7, 8, and 9A that we can hold, and we have been holding, and then also 9B, we'll have to get preliminary acceptance and final acceptance as well.
Okay. The other challenge that I have, and I mentioned it earlier, is we have people who have already bought those lots that are waiting to build their houses. The lady who contacted me bought her lot in October of 2024, so she's been waiting almost a year to even get her house started to be built. So, these are people who want to come to Sibolo, who are going to be our neighbors, who are going to be residents that are also impacted by this. Is it fair to continue to have them wait? I just, I'm struggling. I understand the final acceptance, what does that, if we just delay final acceptance forever and ever and ever, what does that do for the developer? What are they on the hook for? Just ongoing maintenance?
Well, they don't get their bond back.
Okay.
So, the money that they put up... Let me turn my mic on. So, they, they have to put out bonds to be able to build, you know, a security bond. And until we accept it, it gets stuck there until they fix it. Once they fix it, then they can go back to the insurance company to retrieve their bond, because they won't be able to go to the next town and start a development. But that's one thing.
Then, I would say, if this gets approved, do not expect any of those things to be finally accepted until this other stuff is fixed. I, I can speak fairly confidently that that will not happen. This is, again, four years plus of stuff, so whenever that meeting can happen, I'm ready.
Yeah, so, to everyone in the audience, you know, if this does get approved tonight by city council, this isn't over. They won't get their final acceptance until meetings have been had and, and they're held accountable.
I would like to ask a question as to why the city cannot have some type of agreement with the current developer in regards to 7, and put a deadline that the stuff has to be taken care of, and if it's not taken care of, that X amount of dollars y'all will pay to the city for it not to, not being done in ample time. I'd like to know why that cannot be done.
Yeah. I'll let Paul speak to the last part, how can we have a new agreement where if they don't complete things, they're going to agree to damages or an amount to pay? You know, that's just strictly outside of our subdivision regulations, and because this is an old subdivision, during which time, the city did not do public improvement agreements, so we rely on the UDC. We can hold the developer accountable for all the public infrastructure standards that they are to build to. I think Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Sanchez-Stevens, Ms. Roberts, to the degree that you, you've been out in the area. We have held final acceptance in one of the units now, because the road keeps failing, because there's...
Seven and eights.
Seven and eight. And so, we are doing our job with this subdivision, holding the developer accountable, and trying to do it in a partnership, right? We're telling them, this is your responsibility. We don't accept public infrastructure unless it meets our minimum standards, and they don't like that. But they do understand that Chris Otto and the staff are holding a standard that we are legally allowed to do. And so, we will meet, let me just shift to, how do we get past all this? We're going to hold the standards, that's what we will do on all these final units. Secondly, you know, sometimes business is about building a partnership and a relationship, so we're going to get the developer in a room with the HOA. We're going to talk to the developer about the other concerns we heard tonight from three residents, and we're going to identify where the development has an obligation to do something, and we'll work to build through a relationship, solutions where people step up and say, I can do that. And I've seen that happen many times with developers, when the city tries to treat them respectfully, but demand that they be responsible for the impact that they have.
We had to do that with Still Creek. Absolutely.
Yes.
Well, and I will add that I have met Chris out in the field at least seven times, particularly on Unit 7. There is an intersection that continuously fails. I mean, they fix it, three months later, it fails again. There is an unidentified source of water coming from somewhere. They have been working since April to identify where the water's coming from. When we met in the field with Ms. Cunningham, Sanchez-Stevens, the resident actually watered their lawn that morning, and we could see the water coming down, and we do believe it's a broken irrigation system. KB Homes is actually investigating that on one or two lots?
So, multiple lots. We reached out to the home builder, and they're going to meet us out there next week sometime, and we're going to explain the situation, how we are seeing water in the irrigation boxes and meter boxes, and we're going to try to identify if it is an irrigation leak, and of course, we're going to continue to try to figure this out.
Yeah, and I've actually told them, I mean, it doesn't make any sense to fix the intersection until we can find the source of water, because it's just going to fail again.
Because it's just messing up the infrastructure.
Norma, go ahead.
First of all, I just want to say, thank y'all for coming out. I know that y'all are in a very difficult position, and I couldn't, I can only imagine how you feel right now. We did not expect for everyone to come, kind of come in when we were talking about this, but thank you for coming out. There is two things that when we met, I had asked of y'all was, first of all, can you please come to our next council meeting when this unit was being brought up? The second thing was, if y'all could please contact the HOA. And it doesn't sound like, even since our last meeting, that there was an attempt, you know, of assurance to contact our HOA. It seems like this entire time, this could have all been avoided if there was just been communication with the HOA, as they've been trying to make contact. I think, moving forward, that really needs to happen, so that there's no more delays, because it's affecting other people trying to build their homes just as well. I think it's just time to really get together and talk these things out, and help with these agreements, where are these funds going? And we also, I mean, I sympathize with them, because if this, when this unit begins to get built, too, there's just more, there's just more concerns about more land being conveyed without them knowing there's more drainage issue. And so, I just, but if we have an open dialogue and an open communication, we can kind of see where that good faith is being brought to the table, and then we don't have to get into the situation again. So, I would just highly encourage for that to begin to happen, and that way, we can start moving forward with solutions, with progress. That way, it doesn't delay your development. And I have to say, I'm sorry that you're at the tail end of the subdivision. You are kind of incurring the heat even from the lower end of the older development that has already existed, and then everything else that has been said from other developers for that. I'm sorry that you're in this position, but I do hope that these communication lines could be opened, and we can make things right.
Stevens, you're absolutely right on that. My comment is, it's going to be hard for them, because I believe they said they've gone through four different developers, and when you go through that many developers, there tends to be some, some things dropped. Yeah. Developers, builders, whatever you want to call it, they're the ones that hold the HOA until the next one comes in and buys it out, and then they are responsible for that HOA. And so, it's multiple, people have their hands in that pie, and it makes it difficult, because, I mean, y'all are, like Ms. Stevens said, y'all are here at the end, just trying to finish it out. Because I know where Mrs. Cunningham lives, there was three developers there, Philstone was there, there was a couple of other ones, where they finally had gotten tired of the city and said, we're out. Philstone, because the lady I was dating at the time, she, she said, we're out. They sold all their, their property, remaining lots, and moved to New Braunfels, had no problems. So, I understand where y'all are coming from, but please understand... Um, but please understand, you know, make an effort or whoever the developer is. With HOA is where they know what's going on. That's my two cents.
Just one last thing and I won't take more of your time. So the, the developers are saying, but then it just, the, the builders keep changing the LLCs. But I just wanted to say, it's also difficult for the HOA in that as the new homes get built. It's going to be newer, just new disgruntled homeowners because they don't have these amenities and everything that they have also been promised. So whatever we can do, moving forward in good faith and deliverance, I think is going to be the best foot forward. So whatever we can do that, because we don't want our new residents to be disgruntled and unhappy to live here because of. The, the promises that were delivered, were not kept. So whatever y'all can do to help deliver, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I'm going to call for a motion. Can we get a motion to either approve or deny this action?
I make a motion to. Approve conditional on a meeting. In the next.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Yeah.
And if the HOA members who are here are willing to give you their direct contact information. Because some of it may be getting hung up with the management company or whoever you're contacting between. They're the ones that you need to be in touch with.
Yeah. Got a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Got a, a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, a second by Councilwoman Mahoney. Please vote.
Oh, you're, you're right.
Motion fails four to zero. I mean, four to two.
So can we put this? As soon as that meeting happens, I want this on the agenda after that meeting happens.
Okay.
Back on the agenda. I. I'm, I was torn about, I think it was very obvious I was torn about approving or denying because these issues haven't been resolved. But again, like I mentioned, I'm not sure if. If this is the right route to deny or not. Um, but that meeting still needs to happen regardless. I don't think it's going to budge anywhere until we get those other issues resolved.
All right. Thank y'all very much for coming out tonight. Um. You know, this will be back, so it's not over, but hopefully meetings will be fruitful. All right. We're going to go into executive session. We're only going to talk about maybe one or two items and then we'll come back out. Um, but we're moving to item 12. The council will meet in executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. Consultation with attorneys, Section 551.074. Personnel matters and.
Okay, we are back. We're gonna resume our city council meeting. The time is nine, nine twenty-seven. No action to announce on the first two items. And we are going to resume with nine F, which is discussion action to approve a purchase order for Colliers Engineering and Design for the Town Creek Low L M or L O R. Yeah, Lomar, thank you. And authorize the city manager to execute the agreement in the amount of fifty-six thousand dollars. Mr. Gomez.
Yes, so this proposal is to work with Colliers to prepare the Lomar for the Town Creek Drainage Improvement. As you know, we completed that project. This is the final step with that. Once approved, this will officially take those forty properties that we improved out of the flood zone and provide them with relief that. So we're asking city council to allow the city manager to approve this purchase order with Colliers to submit this letter of the Lomar for the Town Creek Drainage Improvements.
Is that the best deal y'all can give us?
That's a pretty good deal. All right, we have a motion.
I make a motion to approve nine F.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman Roberts. Please vote. Motion carries six zero. Next up is item number G. Discussion action to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Viking Construction LLC in the amount of five hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty bucks for the FY twenty-five street preservation package. And Mr. Gomez, this is for redoing the neighborhood streets in Saratoga, right?
Yes, so this will do a preservation on the streets in the Saratoga subdivision. This is part of our FY twenty-five street maintenance program. So as you recall, we've came to the council previously to develop a plan for a street management program. This is part of that effort. This will do a preservation, a micro-surfacing in the Saratoga subdivision. This is similar to what we did at Buffalo Crossing, Benwood Ranch, and Benwood Pass. So we're asking city council to approve this contract with Viking Construction. Our engineers did review the contract and everything and found that they are the lowest responsible bidder for this contract.
Very good. We have a motion.
I do have a question real quick. When it comes to these street preservation packages, how does the city determine which streets would be worked on?
Yes, so what we did for this package, we used our twenty eighteen survey that we got through LAN when they did, came in and did the street PCI evaluation for all our infrastructure. And so these projects, as you recall, when we did our presentation, any street that was rated between a eighty and a ninety, we recommend doing a preservation so that way it extends the life of that pavement. So this area right here fell into that category and we decided to go ahead and tackle this area so that way it extends the life of the infrastructure.
One last thing I'd just like to say, I like this meeting staff report a lot better. I think I'm seeing some improvement in some more transparency of how the bids are being done and getting more information about the projects themselves rather than just getting one, just a standard memo. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Can someone, you wanna make a motion? Norma?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve item nine, nine G?
Nine G, yep.
Nine G.
Okay, we got a motion on the table by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens, second by Councilman Hicks. Motion carries six zero. Next up is H. Discussion action to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with JM Pipeline LLC in the amount of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars for the FM seventy-eight eight-inch sanitary sewer replacement. Mr. Gomez, what location is this? This is the one that we talked about over there by the?
Fun Town RV.
Fun Town, okay.
Yes, yes, so in twenty twenty-four, city council requested that we investigate an issue with the sewer flows that was affecting that business owner. During that time, we investigated and we had Colliers assist us with engineering and looking at this one. We did put this out for bid and JM Pipeline was the lowest responsible bidder. We did have our consultants review it for clarity and they did come in at the lowest responsible bidder. I apologize for the typo on the recommendation letter.
I'll make a motion to approve. This is a long time coming. We, you know, that business, I mean, it's ridiculous to have affluent backing up into your business.
Second.
Kinda hard to sell.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote.
Fun Town RV.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you, everybody. Next up is item I. Discussion action regarding the final plat of Grace Valley Ranch, Phase Three B. Mr. Spencer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Property owners, Lennar Homes Texas Land and Construction. Representatives are Coot Engineers. It's approximately twenty-two point four seven six acres. It's located at the, or near the intersection of Wild Road and Lazy Acres Lane. This is in the city's ETJ. They're proposing a hundred and seventeen residential lots and five open space lots. The utility providers are GV Sud for sewer and water and GV EC for electricity. So at your July twenty-second meeting, council voted to postpone consideration of this item. That was made at the request of the representatives, Coot Engineers. One of the issues that were called out from the last time, they were having to address some comments from the prior Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. That Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on June eleventh, they had voted six to zero to recommend denial of the final plat. That was due to some outstanding comments, including the formatting issues, missing labels and square footages, corrections to the curve and line tables, as well as some minor errors on that, that plat. One of the comments have not been addressed fully because it requires city council's acceptance and the adjustment of the lot count and acreage. So within their land study, they showed a proposed two hundred and twenty-two residential lots within Phase Three on forty-two point seven acres. What's shown as combined with Phase Three A and Three B for, for that Phase Three area are two hundred and twenty-two residential lots on forty-six point eight acres. However, the applicant did submit a revised phasing exhibit, which is in your packet, showing that the overall, while it is an increase within that unit three, the overall acreage and lot count won't be increased. So what staff is recommending is a conditional approval and that is contingent upon city council's acceptance of that adjustment. If it, if you all feel that it meets the overall spirit and intent of that original land study that was approved in twenty nineteen.
Any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment on this particular one first. And, and I did notice that our planning and zoning had a denial for pending comments. I've just been noticing over this past year that that's been happening quite a bit and I like to watch the PNC meetings to see the dialogue between resident volunteers, right? And I've just been noticing many times that we have a planning zoning denial that they're recommended to deny because of pending comments. It doesn't go back to them for discussion and then it comes straight to council and then y'all recommend approval. And I just, I, I don't know why that process has been taken that way, but I've just noticed it's been happening more regularly. I would like to have more input and discussion weighed from our resident volunteers because they have a lot to offer and I don't want them to be bypassed or overlooked for whatever reason. And I would, I just wanna bring that to staff's attention because that does matter. They're a recommending body.
I know they only meet once a month. Would they have to do a special meeting in order to make, to make that timeframe or? Yeah, so I guess it would, like, in order for that to happen, they would have to come back together for a second meeting and do a special meeting to have their questions answered. And that's probably why it's happening.
And, and just to cut in really quick. So recently, cause that, you're right, Ms. Sanchez Stevens, that, that was the practice prior. But we've recently had a new interpretation of the Texas Local Government Code in terms of completeness. And so previously, based off of what, what we were considering complete was just the application requirement. So if they submitted a traffic impact analysis, the plat, all the required documents for that submittal, it would be considered complete and it would keep moving on that process. Now, what we're considering complete is until all comments have been addressed by all reviewing parties, so planning, public works, engineering, we will not put that on Planning and Zoning Commission's docket. So all plats going forward, staff should have all the comments addressed by that time. And so you won't have any issues in terms of outstanding comments at that.
Thank you for rearranging that. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we get a motion? Don't all speak up at once. Item fails for lack of motion. Moving on to J. Discussion action to approve the purchase order for Center Technologies for Arctic Wolf Network Solutions to include multiple managed services and associated one-time costs and to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement in the amount of, I'm sorry, the amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. This is very specific. And so this is for network security, right?
Yes, sir, this is for Security, Security Operations Center as a service with Arctic Wolf. So tonight, we have with us Brandon Fuller and Tony Owens with Center Technologies, Danny McInney and Jim Johnson with Arctic Wolf. So they'll come up and speak a little bit about their, the solution as well. So the, what we're looking for tonight is feedback and direction from council. We're seeking support to implement Arctic Wolf as the city SOC provider to support making the much-needed enhancements and improvements to our existing cybersecurity resources and to support recommendation, recommendation of Center Technologies or support the recommendations of Center Technologies as a result of the security audit that was performed as required by the Office of the Governor's Grant. And also to move forward with an item listed in the five-year technology strategic plan. Tonight, we're gonna take a look at what, what is a security operations center. We'll have Center Technologies come up to explain to you their process and why they're recommending Arctic Wolf. And then Arctic Wolf will come up and talk about their product. So with, as far as a security operations center, SOC is, is, is just that, a security operations center. In larger organizations, the SOC is a dedicated team of folks who continuously monitor network, systems, everything across the city, or for us, the city. They respond and remediate to any threats or possible threats that they are, you know, come across. These folks are the ones who work hard to keep you out of the news and also work hard to keep, keep you from coming a statistic. So Arctic Wolf would, with this contract, Arctic Wolf would become that SOC for us. It would become that SOC team, that team of people. And from here, we'll let Brandon Fuller come up.
Mr. Beekman.
Yes, sir.
Have you ever done a background check on these guys? Talk about security.
You can't work in Arctic Wolf without having a background check.
Have we done our background check on?
I'm Brandon Fuller. I'm the county executive here out of San Antonio. In our assessment that we did a couple of months ago for the city, part of that findings we reviewed with Tracy was our recommendation of Arctic Wolf as that NVR and EDR provider. The reason we partnered with Arctic Wolf, I should say, we, we also presented some other options other than Arctic Wolf. The reason we kinda suggest Arctic Wolf is they are, they provide a white glove service as far as a SOC is concerned. They go above and beyond taking care of their people. So that's why we choose them as a partner and recommend them.
SOC is security audit, right?
Correct.
Security Operations Center.
Security Operations Center.
Security Operations Center. So at Arctic Wolf, we are a US-based company. And although we are headquartered in Minneapolis, our flagship SOC is right off of sixteen oh four. We do that because it's right next to UTSA, the number one cyber program in America, as well as Air Force Cyber Command. We actually write the curriculum at UTSA and we participate in the US Skills Bridge Program where for the last six months of a contract, as soldiers are preparing to transition to civil life, they can come work for Arctic Wolf. We train them, they can intern with us and possibly move on in their careers. Our, we've been doing this for a very long time. We've been around for thirteen years and our motto is to end cyber risk. And that's a very lofty goal. However, if you don't reach for something great, you're never gonna reach that. So we are always looking after cyber risk for our customers and we do that at scale. With over ten thousand customers in a hundred different countries, we see a lot of data. The benefit to Sybalo for that is if we see a new indicator of compromise, meaning a new way that a bad guy is trying to reach into an environment, if we see that in Berlin or Sydney or Detroit or Sybalo, we can code detections for that into our platform and protect all of our customers against those new indicators of compromise. Security is not just technology, right? You can't just have a firewall, you can't just have antivirus and protect your environment. You need experts watching that environment. TSA gets a pretty bad name, but if they just had metal detectors and body scanners, it wouldn't. wouldn't work. They need to have the agents monitoring those tools and protecting our airways. Much like that, we use top-grade technology, along with over 1,000 security engineers, protecting our customers day in, day out, 24/7, 365. Like I said, our mission is to end cyber risk. Risk is broken up into a few different areas. First, we have to assess it. We use the technology to assess the risk, but then we pair that with extraordinary talent to mitigate the risk. But no matter how good the tools are, no matter how good the people are, you always have some residual risk. But you can transfer that with the warranty that we offer with our services, as well as cyber insurance. And I think I'll hand it back to you, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you.
How many times have you been breached?
Have we been breached at Arctic Wolf? Zero. Our customers...
How many times have they been breached?
I don't have that information, and we don't disclose that information. I can tell you that when our customers do get breached, it's because we're not deployed in a certain part of their environment, and a threat actor has gotten in that way and moved laterally.
Thank you.
Okay, so what's covered with Arctic Wolf Services? The contract presented to you is a one-year, a contract with a two-year option. That's the whole package. So, in the R, that is the actual SOC part of it. This is the monitoring pieces. We're also going to bring in the endpoint protection, which is Aurora Managed Endpoint Defense. We're also going to be pulling in Managed Risk. So, what Managed Risk does, it's a service that will constantly scans our environment and looks for new risks not seen before. So, it's just a way of keeping an eye on everything throughout the environment. And then, of course, the jumpstart retainer or incident response, that's if something does happen. Arctic Wolf, they mobilize, they get here, their hour, or their window of time is four hours. They come and help remediate the problems, and get us stood back up, and get us moving back on our way. So, hopefully, they'll have it fixed before the three-letter agencies show up, but, you So, and as was, as Mr. Johnson did say, Arctic Wolf does have a warranty with their service. So, with the package that we're looking at, we do qualify for that $2 million warranty. So, what that means is if we are breached while they're watching us, that's money that we can use to help build our environment back up, along with our cybersecurity insurance. So, and then, of course, that brings us back to the feedback and direction. And are there any questions?
No. Out of, I guess y'all, it shows 255 companies, reviews, y'all are a 3.8 out of 5. One out of 5.
What are you looking at? Sorry.
Internet.
Oh, okay. So, if you look at our net promoter score, so that's a way that customers are surveyed, and they're asked whether or not they would recommend it to a colleague, and we have the highest NPS, net promoter score, across the industry, and one of the highest in technology period. I believe our NPS score is 68. To give you an example, Apple's is something like 32. So, we have a very good net promoter score. We'd be happy to provide references for customers.
Well, I'm sure that you need to bring us something before this council...
No, sir.
I just, one of those, you ready? I want to ask questions.
I'm happy to have.
Okay. Do you think anyone else have any questions?
Well, I just, yes, I do, actually. The grant itself, is it on a yearly basis, and is that something that you're going to continue to apply for every year?
Yes, absolutely. We will continue to apply for it.
And it says here, the financial impact is 10% matched from the city, approved as part of Budget Amendment Two. Is that from fiscal year 2025?
It is.
Okay. And I just wanted to make a side comment. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's quite impressive. I'm aware of UTSA and their cybersecurity program. Very impressive. I know Northeast Lakeview also has a pretty stellar 1-2. And the only thing, I guess, that I had in just reading the packet itself, I was just a little bit apprehensive before the presentation, was that we weren't given other comparison matrix with other options to see how it competes best against the others. And for us to only be presented one thing just kind of left me to research others, you know, like, you know, CrowdStrike, SecureWorks, Rapid7, things like that.
Yes, ma'am.
I would have, I would have had more of an assurance had I seen a comparison matrix, and then heard the presentation, rather than this was just the all-in-be-all kind of thing. And I just wanted to do right by our taxpayers just as well, that I realize that these are grant funds, and I guess later on, you know, we can redetermine what that contract looks like later, but thank you for your presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all for your time.
I'll make a motion then to approve. Is it 9J?
Got a motion on the table by Councilman Hicks, seconded by Randy Roberts. Please vote.
Question carries.
Being Arctic Wolf, we howl a lot, so can you make a motion to howl?
Oh!
Yeah, my man! Thank you, sir!
You're going to end up on a commercial, Joel.
All right. Thanks, y'all, very much for coming out.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is item K, discussion and presentation to the city council regarding the FY25 Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. Mr. Gomez.
Yes, so, good evening, mayor and council. This is just a quick overview of the NTMP program. As you know, city council approved this back in FY24. This was an improvement from the 2014 council-approved residential traffic management policy that was in place. And when we brought this in front of council last year, it did get approved. So, some of the feedback and direction that we're looking at from council tonight is, does the current NTMP goals still reflect the community and council priorities? Do certain neighborhoods, corridors, or street types need to be prioritized in the selection process? Is the current engagement process, petitions, neighborhood meetings, and surveys sufficient? Or is there additional outreach needed? And how would, how often would city council like to receive program updates? Annually, semiannually? And we can discuss it as we go. So, just a quick overview of the program. So, as we discussed when we did initially launch this, this is to provide residents with the process of addressing speeding, cut through their neighborhoods, and improve neighborhood safety. In FY24, we did receive 21 requests. I provided council with a breakdown of those requests, and let you know exactly where we stand with those. As part of the FY25 budget, FY26 budget, we set a goal to strengthen our NTMP, and city council asked us to incorporate $50,000 into 26 budget for NTMP projects. Currently now, we are fully staffed in our department, so we're able to deliver this program more efficiently, and conduct more resident engagement with this. Council direction is requested on the goals and priorities, engagement, and update frequency. So, some of the challenges that we faced with the initial launch was insufficient request form information. So, when we initial, when we started the launch of this program, we quickly realized that the form that we put on revised did not allow residents to give us the full scope of the issue. All we were asking for is the street names, the to and from, and then what the issue was, but we didn't give them a breakdown of issues to select from. So, if they wanted it speed humps, if it was signage requests. So, one of the things that we're going to improve on in this year is making changes to the form, is to create a dropdown menu, so that way residents can actually select what they're seeking for their improvements. This created, as you can see on the update that I provided council, there's a lot of residents that were still waiting on more information. What we did this year, when we received the initial form from revised, we would reach out to the resident once, send a follow-up email, and then we reached out again. So, we reached out to each resident twice, twice with a phone call, twice with an email, and currently, we still have some residents that we're waiting on more information for. We did get some feedback from some residents, but not all of them, and only one of them got close that provided petition back. We got 50% of the neighborhood to participate, and per the NTMP, you need 60% of neighborhood participation to move forward with it. So, we're trying to work with that neighbor to see if she can garner more support within her subdivision, so that way we can try to move forward with that one. So, in FY24, so this just gives a breakdown, 13 were still pending and complete information. Four, we closed out because they were not NTMP eligible. Some of the issues were that it was part of a new development. One of them, we closed it out because we are actually reviewing that as part of the Deer Creek project, which was a blind spot on Senna Bar Trow and Deer Creek Boulevard. And the other ones was an issue with, it was HOA issues. So, three of them, we did get feedback, and we are going to follow up with those residents. Those are on Blue Sage Lane, so two of those were requesting speed cushions. So, we are going to reach out to those neighbors, provide them with more information, provide them with the petition forms, so that way they can start garnering participation from their neighborhood, so that way we can try to get that 60% threshold, and then evaluate that project for future advancement.
Where are they?
That was on Blue Sage Lane, off of Corridor Drive, Cordaro Drive, and Eagle Flight Street. So, it's over there, close to...
You said there were three that were... Oh, one is advancing with petition.
Yes, that was on Willow Way.
Willow Way.
No, the one I'm, petition was on Bentwood Ranch and Turnberry. So, there's a blind spot. Ms. C.C. Abel provided us with some documentation. She did go out and get petitions signed by her neighbors, but she only got 50% of the neighbors who signed the petition, and she's still trying to work on the other 10%, and we're trying to work with her to do that.
Well, I know that there is a blind spot there, because you go out, you get the hill coming down around from where Mr. Mahoney lives, and it's a blind spot there.
Yes.
So, we really, I know that we've got this as 50, you know, 60%, but we got to do something about that.
So, if it's something that's affecting a street and not an entire neighborhood, which requires 60% of the neighbors, but if it's something that's going to affect an entire neighborhood, like, let's say, Saratoga, then you're going to have to go and get 60% of every resident that lives in Saratoga?
No. So, when we do this process, we meet with the residents, and we ask them where the issue is. So, a lot of times, it's their street, they have cross streets that they're referencing, that's saying, this is, people speed through this neighborhood, we want to install speed humps. Well, within that area, we got to get 60% of participation from whatever the cross street is on that, on that street that they're requesting the improvement on. It's not the whole neighborhood, it's the street that they're requiring, requesting the improvement.
I'd like to see that on Main Street, because that's my neighborhood, and I still hadn't heard back from the, because we sent out for a...
Your, yeah.
Study.
Our Colliers Engineers is working on the study and...
Main Street is horrible. I mean, people are speeding it. I need the police out there. I need something. It's horrible.
Mayor and council, if I could just add to Mr. Gomez's comments, you know, when we did Buffalo Crossing, it was one road, but it was the road that all residents had to travel on, and so it was the whole neighborhood. And I agree with Mr. Gomez, is there may be a neighborhood traffic management project where it's a singular street, and we're not pulling the whole neighborhood, but it is the residents that are likely to use that street. And so, it's not always an entire neighborhood. And so, I just wanted to add that to the discussion.
Councilman Mahoney, you're recognized.
Just a quick question, Mr. Gomez, is there a, in researching the right way to remedy a situation, is there a time component, like, time of day, for example? I guess what I'm asking is, do you identify the problem as being only during the lunch hour, or is there... You see what I'm getting at? Some way that you look at, there's a window of time that it is a serious issue, and maybe 90% of the time, it's not.
Yes, so if this was a project that was to move forward, that would be incorporated within the traffic study, and all that information would be taken into consideration when we came to council to propose what the actual solution would be. So, we would identify the project. Once we move forward with that, we conduct a traffic study, and we will utilize our engineers to review that information and develop what option they think would be best for it, and then that's when we'd come to council, present it, and council would say, yes, we want to move forward with it, or no, we don't, because we want to prioritize this other project first.
All right. So, you have more slides?
Yes, so this was the one on Turnberry, I mean, on Bentwood Ranch and Turnberry Drive, excessive speeding and reckless driving, and then limited sight visibility when turning onto Turnberry. As I said, we had 10 of 22 residents. We're still working with Ms. C.C. Abel to try to get that over the threshold, so we can move forward with this project in FY26. So, some of our goals and improvements, as I stated, city council is allowing us to do the $50,000 with the FY26 budget when it gets approved. We will be utilizing those funds to try to do at least two projects in the NTMP program in FY26. Our department is now going to be fully staffed to support this program, and of course, improve the form to be revised to be more user-friendly. So, tonight, just as I said at the beginning, we're just seeking some council feedback and direction. Do y'all feel that the current NTMP goals still reflect the community and council priorities? Do certain neighborhoods and corridors need to be prioritized when selecting projects? Is the current engagement process sufficient, or do you think that we need to do additional outreach? And how often would you like to receive program updates in FY26?
Well, I'll answer a couple. The bottom one, no less than semiannually, preferably quarterly.
Quarterly.
I mean, if there's only two projects for that year, you know, if you get both done in the first half of the year, obviously, you don't need to repeat it to us, but, you know, if we've got multiple projects, or we've got projects that aren't done, absolutely, you need to do it quarterly, so we're up to date on what's going on. I think the current engagement is good, good petitions, and having the meetings, because I know that between Donetta and Councilwoman Cunningham, y'all were able to get the Buffalo Crossing taken care of. So, I think that y'all, there's no additional outreach needed. I mean, I think that you get a council person on board with this, they're going to reach out and get out there to take care of our citizens. I mean, like I mentioned earlier in this council meeting, we're here for them, and we should be striving every single day to do a better job for them, so that's all I've got.
Okay. No vote on this one. You have more slides?
No, this...
I do want to add, if there's something that's in one of our districts, if you could kind of loop us in, because I don't know if anyone has submitted them. I know I've sent the information to a lot of neighborhoods, and a lot of HOAs, and a lot of people. I know Donetta has for Buffalo Crossing as well, but we don't know if they were actually submitted, or where they are in the process.
Okay.
So, if there's a way to loop us in, just, it doesn't have to be a full presentation or anything like that. Y'all have plenty to do, and our agenda's already long enough. But if you could at least kind of let us know, like, hey, this is happening in one of the neighborhoods in your area, just FYI, yeah. And I don't think, even quarterly, I don't think we need a full presentation. I think we could just get an email, or a paper, or something in our packet. But as you're receiving these, if there's something like the 50%, so close, but so far, let the council, let a council member who's in that area know, and then they can kind of help.
Okay.
Make it move a little bit. That might take a little bit of the pressure off of your staff as well.
Yes. That'll help us a lot, too, so.
Reach out to us.
Right, absolutely. And I think also, just like we have the updates for the signature on the agenda, just having it in the package is just all...
Like a staff update.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just like our police report, yeah, and our fire, all of that stuff.
Okay. You have anything else?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we're going to go to the ordinances, Section 10A, approval/disapproval of an ordinance to voluntarily annex a 1.3108-acre tract out of Lot 1, Block 1, shops at Cibolo Creek, ABS 110 Sur Est Dominguez, 240 Bright Road. Rick Vasquez.
Thank you, mayor, council. This is an application for a voluntary annexation. The ordinance before you will annex a 1.3-acre tract out of Lot 1, Block 1, shops at Cibolo Creek, abstract 110, survey Est Dominguez, located at 240 Bright Road. The property owner is Mass Global Financial, or the Silveta family. The goal is to bring them in and provide utility services to the property. It's an existing retail strip center that is 100% occupied. It's an existing retail strip center that is 100% occupied.
Motion to approve.
Second. No, you go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna wait around. My bad.
Welcome to Sibilo. Nice. I love it. All right, so we got a motion on the table by Councilman Hicks. Who seconded that? Donetta? Okay, Ms. Sanchez Stevens, all right. So motion carries, 6-0. Welcome to Sibilo. All right, next up is 10B. Approval/disapproval of an ordinance amending the city of Sibilo's UDC Article 21, replacing Part F, 2010 Sibilo roadway and fire hydrant criteria with Part F, Transportation Design Criteria Manual, and repealing ordinances in conflict and savings. Mr. Otto.
Yeah, so back on September 24th of 2024, City Council directed me to update the DCM with a 32-foot pavement section for residential streets and increasing the minimum pavement standard to 500,000 easels, and to have five-foot sidewalks married to the curb. On May 13th of 2025, I presented the final draft of the DCM to City Council, and y'all asked me to bring back an ordinance to adopt it. So here we are with the ordinance to actually adopt the DCM.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the 11, Resolution 11A. Approval/disapproval of a resolution by the City Council of Sibilo ratifying a resolution for a grant application to the Office of the Governor for the Cyber Security Grant, planning and project and designing, designating, and authorizing official. This is Tracy, this is what we just...
This is, yes, sir.
We just spent the money, so we better ask for the grant.
Now that we're going to spend it, we do have to ratify the grant.
Motion to approve.
Hold on, just...
Wait, Tracy, did you have a...
I do, so I wanted to hand this out to you.
Well, that's because, I'm gonna tell you, that's because we told her. Katie.
This is the red line version of the document. Katie does have to correct her point as well.
I approve. No, she's doing exactly what council told her to.
Oh, no, I don't know.
Okay.
Katie, vote, please.
Do you want me to print it out?
All right, motion carries, 6-0.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next up is 11B. Approval/disapproval of a resolution to amend the terms of Sibilo near the city of Sibilo District, SBI, and the city of Sibilo on the program, the CPD, as the SROs program, and authorized city manager, Chief.
Hey, good evening, Mayor. Council Chief Andrews, for the record. So, as council will remember, on June 17th, at our budget workshop meeting, I presented to the council some of the proposed changes regarding our SRILA, and seeks feedback from the council based on some of the changes that are in that agreement. At the time of the meeting, our council members advised that they did not have any questions regarding the changes that were being proposed in the SRILA. And I asked if there was, and council also asked if there would be any specific actions that they needed to take. The SRILA, from that point, was going to be sent back to SEUCISD, letting them know we didn't have changes, so that they can present for final approval to their board. The SRILA was sent on June 18th to the SEUCISD, and their board approved that ILA, I want to say at their board meeting on July 24th. Tonight, I come back and for a council, bringing back the ILA, or requesting it allow our city manager to assign the amended version of this ILA between the SEUCISD and the city of Sibilo. Are there any questions regarding this?
This was five different threads.
Any ILA, yeah, those were some of the changes that we presented to you guys, and we went over each one in the budget workshop. If you need me to update you, I can. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Joel, you got our motion.
Motion to approve, 11B.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Roberts, second by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens. Please vote. All right, motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Next up is 11C. Approval/disapproval of a resolution approving and amended fund balance policy. Ms. Miranda.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council tonight is being asked to consider approval of a resolution amending our fund balance policy. When we discuss fund balances, what we're really talking about is our unassigned fund balance, or our reserves, which are resources that are available outside of the budget for use for unplanned or unavoidable costs. City Council first adopted a fund balance policy in 2011 with a 40% reserve requirement, which was considered very conservative at the time. In 2011, 40% of the general fund budget amounted to approximately 2.9 million. In 2015, City Council amended the reserve requirement from 40% to 35%. And in '22, the reserve requirement was reduced to 28%. This year, City Council was presented with best practices for setting the reserve requirement, which included a risk analysis and mitigation approaches. Based on the assessment of our circumstances and potential risks, an appropriate range of reserves falls between 17 and 25%. City Council feedback was to reduce the reserve requirement to no less than 25%. For reference, 25% is approximately $5.4 million, which is almost twice as much as what 40% was in 2011. The policy also includes budget strategies for replenishing fund balance if it falls below that minimum threshold. Staff recommends adoption of the fund balance policy that's before you tonight.
Make a motion to approve, 11C.
Second.
Got a motion by Hicks, second by Sanchez Stevens. Please vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. Motion carries. I think. It's that sensitive, huh? There it is, there it is. Okay, motion carries, 6-0. We're going to go to our next one. We're going to go back to executive session. We've got five more items to finish out in executive session. The council will meet in executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, Section 551.074, personnel matters, and Section 551.087, economic... Well, I don't know if we need the economic development, but anyway. The time is... The time is 10:11. We will break in executive session.
Okay, we are back from executive session. The time is 11:40 PM. We will resume from executive session. Do we have a motion on 12F, which is the city manager employment evaluation and duties?
I would like to make a motion to separate the city manager's employment agreement and its severance agreement with no changes to either agreement at this time, and authorize Mayor Mark Allen to execute such agreements dated August 26, 2025.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Roberts, and second by Councilman Mahoney. Please vote. Motion carries four to two. Joel, you got that other motion for 12G?
I make a motion after many months of deliberating and discussing this, make a motion to hire Denton Navara as our new city attorney.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilwoman Cunningham. Motion carries six zero. Okay, so we're going to go back in the agenda to item L, which is, that's nine L, discussion from council members that have attended seminars, events, or meetings. This time, we're going to start with Randy. Mahoney? Okay, same here. Katie, you got anything?
Um, Premier ER did a big event. There were a lot of people out there. It was a good showing. Yeah, it was a good event.
Yeah, Spurs.
Yeah, little Miss Cibolo's were there.
Champagne.
Julian Champagne.
Premier's been a great partner.
I just want to make one quick comment. Today is actually one year since my incident happened with my leg, and I am super excited that next Thursday, I'm actually going to be a part of the Cibolo Citizens Patrol class. So I just, I'm super grateful for that. That's it. Thanks.
That's awesome. Joel?
We had a legislative update by Lineberger last week. I know that Mr. Mahoney and Mrs. Sanchez Stevens went to it. A lot of good updates there. Myself and the mayor and a couple other came in third place in our bowling tournament on Friday. But we did place, and I mean.
There was what, about forty teams?
There was forty teams, or thirty, thirty-eight teams.
Place ain't too bad.
So, that's all I've got.
Yeah, thank you very much, Joel. All right, next up on M, we'll start with you, Joel. Anything for the next agenda? You just want? Anything for the next agenda, or you just want to email it to Peggy?
I'll just email it to Peggy. I don't have anything.
Donat, do you got anything? Good. Katie, you got anything on top of your mind?
The, it was kind of mentioned earlier with the meeting with the Saddle Creek Ranch HOA and the developers, and then also, in the future, I'd like to discuss what we are doing. If there's a plan for looking at the impacts that neighborhood runoff is having on landowners. The residents that were here tonight are not the first ones, and they're not going to be the last ones that are impacted by these new developments or even existing developments. Stone Brook, for example, is running onto the Car Means property, and it's causing huge, big gaping holes. That's affecting their ability to let their cows out to roam. And so I think that that's something that we need to look at as a city because we're going to have to address some of that. HOA maintenance of the green spaces in the flood areas, we've gotten more and more questions about that. We did a HOA series a while ago, but maybe we don't do a series. Maybe we just do a workshop where staff could lead it with experts in that area on if the HOA is deeded, whether they know it or not, if they're deeded a drainage area, or a detention pond, or a flood zone, what is the responsibility of that HOA? For example, my HOA has a park. In that park is at the end of kind of a cul-de-sac type area. The drainage flows down the road into a little, a little culvert, and that culvert goes under the sidewalk and through the park into a ditch. That ditch is no longer a ditch. It's higher than the culvert. We're probably going to have to dig that out. But as an HOA member, I don't know anything about engineering or how to dig that out. Am I allowed to have anyone dig in a flood zone area or a female waterway? Those are things that HOAs don't know, and their management companies are not telling them. So I think that having a very specialized workshop on those specific things that we are getting more and more questions about would be beneficial. And then just kind of a follow-up on a very old thing. The trees along Cibola Valley Drive, they were pulled out. We were told at the time that they would be replaced. Not in the same spot, but we would plant the same number we pulled elsewhere in the city. I was sent it, I was sent an email from one of the residents involved from around that time, and she said, "We were told by a former staff member, we received a grant for those trees." Well, those, the grant that we received for trees were all the trees that were dead on South Main and Shaver. So, kind of want to know what, if we have a solution moving forward. But I had forwarded that email, and I haven't really seen anything on that yet. But I know that that's going to keep coming up. I've...
So we'll put that on a future event. We're not, we're not here to discuss them.
Okay, but future agenda, I know you just brought it, and you just reminded me about us possibly, I mean, if we've got our guys up there mowing a drainage area that's large, and then we, something about them paying us, can we look at that?
We'll bring that back as an agenda item.
You done with the agenda items, Katie? That's my Mahoney. Roberts, anything? Okay, all right. Oh, yeah, the workshops, Peggy?
Mayor and Council, just for clarity, the, the actions from that, Cunningham asked for an HOA meeting to help HOAs understand how to manage open spaces floodplain. There was a couple other items, ma'am. I can get that from you later. Cunningham asked for an agenda item regarding how we will move forward to replant same number of trees that were removed from Cibola Drive, not on the street, but elsewhere, parks and so forth. And then Mr. Hicks asked for an agenda item that council will discuss. Do we want to get in the business of mowing private open spaces that are owned by HOAs? Did I capture that right? Did I miss anything? Yes, yes, yes. Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, on the calendars, on the September calendar, I do need to let you know that we would like to do a budget town hall. And the date that we could do that is either September 8th, which is a Monday, or a Thursday, which is September 11th. And so I was just wanting to find out what date would be better for everybody.
I think September 11th is good for the budget town hall, right?
It's a budget town hall.
Yeah.
That is, but we can easily change the historic meeting. Yeah, and we could actually cover that in another room also.
Yeah, so, so this would be an opportunity for us as a city to explain to the, to the citizens about this tax rate that we have.
Right, before we actually have our special council meeting on the 18th.
I, I think it deserves an explanation, especially with the taxes going up slightly last year and then the...
Yes.
You know.
And, and council, when we've done workshops in the past, we'd have multiple stations. We'd also talk about what's in the budget, and what are we giving to the community? What are we doing for the community? Is that the idea?
Yes. Does anyone else have any questions about that?
Did you say September 8th was an option?
September 8th wasn't the other option.
Because that one works better for me.
Okay, eight it is. All right, forget about the 11th.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do September 8th.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to remind everyone also that starting in September, we will be starting up our youth council again. So our, our youth council will be the first Thursday of every month. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. All right.
I'll just adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Any votes? No, no, no. We are adjourned. Thank you.